Yes.
Have they thought about like?
All right.
City Council?
I know, but the field is pretty tough.
We're going to begin. Okay, Rosie, roll call vote.
Trustee Anderson, here. Trustee Crane, here.
Trustee Wagen, here.
Trustee Pearson, here.
Trustee Murphy, here.
Trustee Ursoilu, here.
Trustee Barto, here.
Dr. Smith, here.
Thank you. Adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Wagen, seconded by trustee Crane. Roll call vote.
Trustee Anderson, yes. Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wagen?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Ursoilu? Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Do we have any community input on closed session?
No.
We will now move to closed session. The items are for A, conference with legal counsel, potential litigation, one case; for B, conference with legal counsel, potential litigation, one case; for C, conference with labor negotiator; for D, public employee discipline dismissal release employment; and for E, student discipline, two cases. We will return to open session at 6:00 P.M. Okay, we will call our meeting to order at 6:02. And we have a readout from closed session. In closed session, the board took action to release and non-reelect 187 temporary certificated employees pursuant to Education Code, Section 44954, effective at the end of the 2022-23 school year, and directed the superintendent or designee to send out appropriate legal notices. The roll call vote was as follows: six ayes, zero noes, and one absent. And we will now have our opening ceremony and moment of reflection led by our student board member.
Let me begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we will have the introduction of new staff. We are very excited to introduce tonight to you the Newport Coast Elementary School Principal, Ms. Heather Darrow. We're excited from our experiences with her as a collaborative, relation-centered leader who's strong in curriculum, teaching, and learning expertise. And so, without further ado, Heather, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Anderson, board members, Dr. Smith, members of Cabinet, and members of the community. I am honored to have the opportunity to serve the educational partners of Newport Coast Elementary and Newport Mesa Unified School District. Throughout my career, I have been a lead learner and have saw opportunities to learn and grow, both professionally and personally. As I join Newport Mesa, I see this as an opportunity to help others continue to learn and grow. I tend to focus on strengths, and I enjoy building the strengths of individuals and teams. And I look forward to developing trusting and collaborative relationships, if that's what you said, with this district. I want to thank my colleagues and my family, my husband and my, one of my daughters is here today, for their support, as well as Newport Mesa leadership team for trusting me with the honor of serving the students of Newport Coast. I'm looking forward to starting there, so, thank you.
Next, we have recognition of our winter athletics sports champions. Ms. Torres?
Dr. Shaka?
Well, thank you, President Anderson, members of the board, Dr. Smith, executive cabinet, and all of our guests here tonight. Newport Mesa students compete in a variety of CIF sports, as we know, throughout the year. We are up here yet again to recognize some more excellence. Tonight, we would like to recognize another outstanding CIF winner. Our Costa Mesa High School varsity cheer team is CIF state champions.
Wow.
To elaborate on this accomplishment, introduce her team and staff, I'd like to call up Dr. DePaul Lee Pottness, Principal of Costa Mesa.
Hi, everybody. So, members of the board, superintendent Smith, executive cabinet, and members of the community, I'd like to call up Coach Cory Johnson, and Coach Tony, and all of our incredible cheerleaders. So, this year, I had the opportunity to get out to our cheer competition in Manhattan Beach and watch how fierce and strong our ladies are. Winning CIF state champions is no small accomplishment. It takes time, commitment, and trust in the team. I'd like to congratulate the team and share how incredibly inspired I am by all of the ladies.
Thank you, Dr. Smith and esteemed board. We appreciate you taking the time to recognize us and this team. It was a little bit of a rough year this year, but they pulled it through, and adversity always makes you stronger, and that's always what I want to teach my athletes. And I'm so incredibly proud of them for taking the CIF state championship this year.
Two rows, tall, less tall, three, you're a cheer.
Two rows.
The short one.
They're fresh.
Less tall.
See, they know how to do it.
Coach, want to get in there?
I'll even it out.
Take a couple, one, two, three, one, two, three. Thank you, any parents want to come up? You're welcome.
The board also gave you guys certificates, so I'm going to call you out one at a time to get them. Dulce. Haley. Angelina. Rachel. Therese. Grace. Desiree. Nila. Ilani. Wade. Malania. Destiny. Kennedy. Madison. And Mia.
Oh, wait, wait, what are all the rings? That's a lot of rings.
They are a lot of rings. So, in my 20 years coaching at Costa Mesa High School, we have won nationals in Florida three times. That's what you see when you watch ESPN. That's us, we've won three times, and five CIF championships.
All right. We were very excited to celebrate our amazing cheerleaders, and so we skipped over adoption at the minute, so we're going to go back and look at them. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved by trustee Crane, seconded by trustee Wagen. Roll call vote.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wagen?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Ursoilu? Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Student board member reports, trustee Crane?
Yes. Tonight's topic is how are seniors preparing for the next endeavor after graduating NMUSD? Also, they're going to share two campus highlights, and tonight, Kate Cherry of Newport Harbor High School will be on the dais as a voting member. And we have Isabella Mills from Costa Mesa High School, TJ Rokas from CDM High School, and Fernando Barñon from Estancia High School that will be making reports as well. So, Kate, do you want to start?
Yeah. Good evening, Superintendent Smith, President Anderson, and members of the board. This evening, we were asked to report on how seniors are preparing for their next endeavors after graduation and to share two campus highlights. Currently, seniors are making visits to colleges, if that is their plan after graduation, and are touring campuses so that they'll be able to make their decision by May 1st and commit to a college of their choosing. Personally, I just committed to the University of Maryland and was able to go visit. And I was able to go visit the campus during spring break, which is what a lot of other seniors did. And so, currently, seniors who have committed are going through the process of applying for housing and looking for roommates, which can be definitely daunting and a little bit difficult. Students who are planning on attending OCC in the fall are meeting with reps from the school to learn about how to register for classes and how to be prepared for the incoming fall. Many seniors are also starting to study for AP tests, which begin in May, in the hopes of gaining credits for college. Two campus highlights currently are that yesterday and today, we had Welcome aboard, in which the freshmen and their families were able to come visit Newport Harbor, and we were able to share with them our traditions, our school culture, and how to teach them about transitioning into high school, and the many different ways that they can get involved with our school. Also, next week, we'll have our academic rally, in which we'll highlight students' academic achievements rather than athletic achievements, which we typically do in our other rallies. So, we'll recognize Students of the Year in all departments, as well as our valedictorians. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kate. Isabella, would you like to go next?
Good evening, Superintendent Smith, President Anderson, respective board and cabinet. My name's Isabella Mills, and I'm the CMHS student representative. On campus this month, we have a couple of exciting opportunities for students. For example, I'm excited to announce that ASB has organized Quad Chella on Friday, April 28th, with live music and the much-beloved taco and ice cream trucks that we enjoyed last homecoming. One of our own teachers is performing with her band, so don't miss out. Currently, both class and ASB elections are being held, and it is wonderful seeing all the creative posters and campaigning taking place across campus. Tomorrow, the Costa Mesa High School chapter of the National Honor Society is holding an induction ceremony. And as an NHS officer, I'm very thrilled to see so many dedicated individuals recognized for their individual contributions to both the CMHS student body and the surrounding Newport Mesa community. As for athletics, I would like to congratulate boys volleyball, girls beach volleyball, baseball, and boys tennis, as they are all headed to CIF. Additionally, boys and girls swim are blowing everyone out of the water, as they are not only headed to CIF but are first in league. And again, congratulations to the cheer team as CIF state champions. Now, in response to the first question, as we move on to the next chapter of our lives, I watch as the senior class prepares to engage in various opportunities, from serving in armed forces, attending colleges spanning the nation, and serving our community here in Costa Mesa, and so much more. Like Kate mentioned, those students attending universities are visiting campuses and making their decisions. And personally, I just committed to UC Berkeley today. So, I would like to thank the College and Career Center on campus for all the guidance I've received while exploring opportunities past graduation, as well as the support in applying to universities and scholarships these past few months. Something I will miss after graduating is the immense support that Costa Mesa High School offers to its students academically, socially, and athletically. I've watched my peers succeed in athletics, the performing arts, maths, and sciences, and a plethora of extracurriculars on campus. And the senior class has absolutely modeled what it is to be a Mesa student, modeling integrity, engaging respectfully, showing compassion, and achieving excellence. And I'm so excited to see what we all do after graduation. Thank you.
Thank you. TJ, next?
All right, good evening, Mr. Superintendent, Madam President, members of the board, and guests. This week, we were asked to share the ways in which seniors are preparing for their next endeavor after graduation. What a bittersweet time this is. I first enrolled at NMUSD in September of 2010 as a kindergartner at Harborview Elementary. The Terminator was governor, Ms. Matoya was principal, Mrs. Borg was my teacher. What a time it was to be alive. I have loved every moment since. The district has shaped me into the man I am today. And I thank all the staff that have worked to keep Newport Mesa great. Let me tell you one thing about the graduating class of 2023 at CDM. We are not preparing for our next endeavor, we are prepared. We have succeeded in the best elementary schools, the best middle schools, and the best high school, all of whom have equipped us with the ability to chase and achieve the American dream. The best advice I can give to my fellow seniors is to enjoy while also staying engaged in the community. ASB is planning events to do just that, as an attempt to combat senioritis, which is a very deadly disease that spreads rapidly after spring break. Speaking for a friend. One of those events we just had was Quad Chella. You may view Quad Chella as a Coachella knockoff, but I view Coachella as a Quad Chella knockoff. This event featured student singers and musicians performing in our quad after school, mimicking the music festival in the desert. There's so much talent that it wouldn't surprise me if some of them go on to perform at the real deal. The event was a tremendous success, thanks to Sophia Raven and the Vigil and Performing Arts Committee within ASB. Although I was prepared to sing "New York State of Mind" by Billy Joel, nobody would let me up on the stage. Just kidding. All types of students attended the event, even if they were just there to enjoy and watch, like me. That's because Quad Chella was an event tailored to students' current interests, and that's why it worked out so well. For those that don't know, there's always a challenge amongst the seniors at CDM in the month of April. That is, that's what we call the triple crown, so I'll lay it out for you a second. This means Cabo San Lucas in spring break, Coachella the following weekend, and then Stagecoach the weekend after that. Now, yeah, sounds fun, right? Now, as student body president, I felt obligated to participate in this challenge, to represent my peers, at least that's the excuse I give my parents. See, when we line up school events with current events, students turn to it. Another campus highlight was a week-long event called Shim's Olympics. Every day at break for five straight days, our senior class president, Mac Shim, hosted an eating competition featuring seven senior boys in front of the whole school in the quad break. And yes, I was one of the seven senior boys. Monday was two dozen donuts, then we had a five-foot-long baguette of bread, then a chocolate milk jug, then hot dogs, and finally Chick-fil-A nuggets. And no, I didn't have to go to the hospital. I proudly came in third place. As silly as this event seems, for five straight days, there were no clicks in the quad break, nobody had their heads glued in their phones, which, by the way, makes, may sound, I may sound old, but the phones are just, I'm over it, have to go at school. And then, thirdly, no one went and sat in their cars. In my book, any event that achieves those three major things is a success. We need to make our kids social again. As our time here winds down, our seniors are looking forward to presenting their senior projects. All year long, our seniors have been shadowing a mentor and a field that they may be interested in pursuing as a career. We develop a thesis that is backed up from experience and research, which we then outline in a nine-page essay, and then a slideshow presentation standing before a panel. CEM students were mentees to doctors, lawyers, teachers, fashion experts, much more. I personally studied municipal finance with Mayor Pro Tempora, Will O'Neill. So many lessons were taught during this project that really can't be achieved in the classroom. Then, we conclude with grad week, which entails a senior sunset, Disneyland trip, senior lunch, parties, and many other celebrations. One last shout-out that I added late, Charlie Allen, a good buddy of mine, just committed to the United States Air Force Academy. It was a post on the district website, and I just wanted to give him a shout-out, because I think I talked about that in our last speech. So, ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, as always, thank you for the opportunity to serve, and God bless you.
Fernando, you're next. I see a college sweatshirt.
Good evening, Superintendent Smith, President Anderson, and Vice President Crane, and fellow board of trustees. Seniors at Estancia High School are preparing for their next endeavors after graduating from NMUSD by connecting with our college and career counselor through one-on-one interaction. Students are able to gain more information about college, potential job opportunities, and have deeper discussions on what their plans are in order to make decisions that will better support students in the future. Estancia PTA is working hard to have seniors purchase our tickets for Grand Night, which will be held at Universal Studios. In terms of the student body, ASB is working hard to make blood drive posters in our upcoming blood drive event that is towards the end of April, and we're also working on Commitment Day posters for the seniors that are planning to commit to a four-year university, community college, or join the Navy and other jobs. A campus highlight that I did want to mention was that we had our yearly Mork Dance Event, which was themed Noche de Rodeo. Earlier in the fall, ASB sent out a survey for the student body to fill out in order to create suggestions for themes for Mork. The results proved that students were interested in having a more Western-themed dance, and it turned out to be a success. And starting fresh off of spring break, students relocated their parking spots elsewhere due to the constructions of the new theater. So far, it has been going well since we came back on Monday. I did want to mention that since students were relocating, parents and students had to adjust, and I would like if the school district would encourage and promote more about the new school theater, because while students and parents are adjusting to the change, some aren't taking it that well, and so it'd be great for there to be more of a vision, so more students can see the effort and work that is being put in. And lastly, I did want to mention that I just committed to University of San Diego, and I'm like really excited.
Thank you, Fernando. Congratulations to all of you.
Okay, next up is our Harvard Council PTA report, Lisa Bowler.
Good evening, Dr. Smith, President Anderson, trustees, cabinet, and guests. Cynthia sends her regards from Portugal. So, you're stuck with me tonight, and she's having a wonderful time. We recently attended the Fourth District PTA Annual Admin Dinner. We were sorry you guys couldn't attend, but they put it on a different night, out of our hands. But we were well represented by the president and principals from Newport Harbor High School and Bac Bay Monte Vista High School, and we had the president from Davis, and we had someone, I apologize for not catching his name, from the district who joined us to represent you guys, which was very nice, but I really am sorry, I can't remember his name. And we were all on hand when Fourth District PTA presented us with the Outstanding Counsel Award for the year, which was very nice. So, when you get, hear from your peers that you're doing a good job, it's very nice, and Cynthia was very thrilled to accept. And we went up there, so, it was good. Our membership is at 6,448. It's never too late to join the PTA, so for those of you who haven't, send it in, jointotum.com, and pick your school. And lastly, I want to make sure that all of you have received your invitations to the Honorary Service Awards Luncheon, which is on Monday, May 8th. If you haven't, let us know, we'll make sure that you get one. Three of you have RSVP'd so far, so hopefully the rest will be able to attend. And it's going to be held at the Mormon church behind Newport Harbor High School, so it's kind of centrally located with, hopefully, good parking and good food. So, we will be honoring all of the volunteers from our Newport Mesa PTA school, so we hope to see you there, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we'll have our CSCA representative, Amy Chan. Oh, or Stu, we're having Stu Tedford.
I did not. President Anderson, trustees, Superintendent Smith, cabinet, and esteemed guests, and I mean that in esteemed fashion, I just want to say thank you. I looked at the Personnel Commission report, and we have a lot of instructional aides that are looking to work for our district, which is super important, because I get quite a few phone calls from the ones that are in place now about how stressed out they are, and they don't feel like they're performing to their, to their normal standard, because they're, they're shorthanded, and they're really starting to feel the pinch on it. So, I really did draw a lot of encouragement from that report. We have a bunch of stuff coming up next month, which is very exciting. It's Classified Employees Month in CSCA, and we will be hosting an ACE Day, which we've invited some of you to, to shadow some of our folks, and then report back on how wonderful we are in doing what we do. And we also have our celebration for our members, which is going to be at a local restaurant that is owned by somebody in the district, so we're going to celebrate all 1,100 of our folks at one time, if you can believe that. So, we don't have enough room to pack those folks in in order we have the budget. However, I wanted to stress that we are celebrating them because they are important. They perform critical functions in our district, and without them, we really couldn't get this work done. In fact, we are going to be celebrating one on the 29th. It's Eleanor Rebar, who is our unsung hero, and as you can tell, she does not like the spotlight. The functions that she performs as treasurer and also as the chapter mom really does help keep us focused, and she really is a vital part of not only my chapter E board and our chapter in general, but of the district as a whole, with the job she does in maintenance. She really does a fine job, and everyone respects the work she does. And the best part is she respects them, and that's what's important. So, I'd like to thank you for your time, and enjoy the rest of your evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, NMFT President, Rhonda Reed.
Good evening, President Anderson, trustees, Dr. Smith, cabinet, and guests here tonight. I will second that thank you with the aides. That really impacts our certificated teachers, preschool, all the way up, much needed, so I appreciate Leona and her team in reaching out and really recruiting. I also want to thank Dr. Smith and Leona as well for the LMI training. I think last time I was here, we talked about we were heading into our second training, that's with CSCA, NMFT members, management, and really just intentionally working together how we can build trust and learn to collaborate in a really meaningful way. So, I also just want to thank our teachers. They had a week off to rest and relax, and we're heading into one of the most busiest times of years. AP testing, state testing, CEM projects, all the different projects across campus, closing up the benchmarks and curriculum goals that our teachers and district have set. I just would hope the district would give grace to our teachers, that in adding any new trainings during this really compressed time for our teachers, would be so much appreciated. Thank you.
Next is community input on non-agendized items, trustee Wagen.
Excuse me. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items not on the regular meeting agenda. Comments on non-agendized topics are limited to three minutes per topic. Comments on non-agendized topics are limited to three minutes per topic, up to twenty, or three minutes per comment, up to 20 minutes per topic, and today, we actually have 10-plus speakers, so we're going to shorten that to two minutes so that everyone can have an opportunity to speak today. On, on, sorry, on, on one topic. So two minutes on the Newport Harbor High School baseball field, since that is our, most of our speakers, so you get two minutes, so we can get everyone in. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person by order of the Brown Act, Section 549, 54 dot 2. The board will take no action nor have any discussion on non-agendized items. The superintendent may provide clarification during superintendent's comments.
First up is Terry Lee, and after Terry Lee will be Krista Perez.
Hello, members of the board. Thank you for having me. As you're probably aware now, the baseball fields at Newport High School, Newport Harbor, are in a state of serious disrepair. My name's Terry Lee. My son, James, is a freshman at Harbor, and I have another son in fifth grade who's coming up as well. Both of my sons have dedicated the greater part of their young lives to, outside of school, to America's favorite pastime, the sport of baseball, and it's been 40 years since the last time Newport Harbor had any significant, the fields at Harbor had any significant attention. That's 40 years. In those four decades, the fences are now collapsing, the grass has been ravaged by wildlife, weeds, the fields and playing surfaces are uneven, and the structures are disintegrating. I also understand that there are plans awaiting approval for Cronod Del Mar to receive, to renovate their lower division fields to the tune of $5 million. And how can that be true when Harbor's varsity fields are in such a state of disrepair? And we haven't even begun to talk about the Frosch Fields. Forty years since the last improvements, and I understand that all, the other three, three high schools have had significant improvements, significant renovations in the last five years. I have a little illustration of some of the other fields. These are beautiful fields to be proud of, with the exception of Newport Harbor here. I think you can see just from the picture, the state that it's in. Our boosters have been seeking tens of thousands of dollars every year just to try and maintain these fields that are getting worse every year, and we're asking for equity. Now personally, I'm not a huge fan of turf fields, but because of the resident wildlife and neighboring ENC, the turf is the best solution for the unique needs of this location.
Thank you, Terry. I'm sorry, we only have two minutes. Thank you. Krista Perez is next, and following Krista is Mark Hatfield.
My name is Krista Perez. Save my belt. I am a parent of a 10th grade student athlete at Newport Harbor High School, and I too am here tonight to talk about the Newport Harbor baseball facilities. As a parent, I want to make sure that my child is safe while at school, whether it's in the classroom or on the field, and what we are talking about and what we want to present to the board is that the district and the school have an obligation to make sure that all of our students are safe, and our concern is that our boys that are playing on this field in the conditions and in the facilities, that they are not safe. I think you'll probably know that I sent a very detailed email to the board last night, so I will not repeat all of the details that are set forth in that, except to say that we believe that the facilities are not clean, safe, or maintained in good repair. One of the big issues that we deal with, which Terry alluded to, is the Environmental Nature Center, which is adjacent to our field. Interestingly enough, I believe that the district owns that, that property and leases it to the ENC, and so we're in an interesting position where the district is responsible on both sides of that equation, essentially. So we are looking for attention and something to be done that, to ameliorate the problems that are affecting our field. We have rabbits, weeds, crabgrass, drainage issues, it's creating safety problems for our players, someone could really be hurt. And unfortunately, we are not in a similar position as many of the other schools in the district, because they have fields that are not interfered with by the Environmental Nature Center, and that's why we're proposing and suggesting that a turf field would be a solution that would take care of the issues that we deal with from the ENC and give our players and our, our kids a safe playing field to play on. Thank you.
Thank you. After Mark is John Engelking.
Good evening, board. My name is Mark Hatfield, and I am a proud father of a current eighth grader at Ensign Intermediate, who shares the same love for baseball and football as all the other parents sitting here behind me. I've had the pleasure to meet with Dr. Smith, and I know I've communicated to all of you guys via email, so I'm going to kind of keep it short, since I know you guys probably received my email yesterday with the presentation that we provided to a group of our families in the program. We thought it was important that we put together a presentation, so the other families in our program understand kind of what we're all up against. So given that, on top of everything, you know, that, that everyone's already said, I just, we have a poster here of some things that we deal with on a daily basis, and this is a super unfortunate scenario that was, that was discovered on our freshman field last Saturday, and that was a used syringe. So we have, my son is in the eighth grade Anchors Program, which is the feeder to the high school, and he's playing on this field, practicing twice a week, playing games, and he's out there running around with syringes. And I, I can, I can honestly say that that is, a big part of that is the security. We don't have any closed premises. Our fields are wide open. We don't have gates, we don't have locked access. Our fields turn into a dog park. Kids, people come in there, and their dogs go to the bathroom, our kids stepping it in their cleats, and then they treat our coaches with disrespect, telling them that they're district employees, and it's taxpayer money, and they can use the field, and all that good stuff. Here, we have a hole with a player. Obviously, this is a huge liability with an ankle break. This is what our current, this is what our field looked like last summer before Coach Lee and the staff did major upgrades. Rabbit feces, holes in the fence, and obviously, there's just, there's a lot of stuff to see here. So thank you for your time, and I look forward to working something out.
Thank you. After John is Richard Morell.
Thank you, Superintendent Smith, President Vice, Vice President and Board Members. My name is John Engelking, and my family's lived here for 20-plus years. Our kids have gone through the Newport Mesa School District, and our oldest has recently graduated from Newport Harbor last year. Our son also plays on the Anchors baseball, baseball program, where the kids share the same baseball field, has played their games and practices on the fields. When we first, when I first went to one of their practices, I was watching their practices, and I was watching a lot of ground balls being hit, and, and taking bad hops and drilling these kids in the face and in the chest, and watching kids run for fly balls and tripping in holes. And I thought it was because of there was poor, maybe poor maintenance that was going on at the field, but what I was shocked to learn, it had to do with infestation of vermin and wildlife. And as you've heard, our fence, we share a fence line with the Environmental Nature Center, and this wildlife comes over to our, to our field, and they, for a source of food, they come over to eat the grass, and then the grass causes, causes the holes in the ground, which is causing, which is causing these, these bad hops with these baseballs. Newport baseball, baseball facility is the only baseball facility that shares this, that shares a fence line with the environmental, and this has led, it has also led to players coming in constant contact with animal feces that is not only unsanitary, but is extremely unhealthy. Additionally, crabgrass growing from the ENC weeds has made it impossible, made it impossible for the coaches to make a safe playing ground for the, for the facilities. These conditions are unacceptable, and for the amount we pay in our property tax bill, we do expect better conditions for our kids to play on. Removing these weeds and crabgrass, crabgrass make it safe, would make it safe for our players to start as a good, a good start. However, a gra, the grass field needs to be replaced with a turf field. You need to get rid of the grass so it can stop the wildlife and, from coming over and feeding on, on the grass in the infield. I appreciate your time, and thank you.
Thank you. After Richard is Lauren Conrady.
Hi, how are you? My name's Rich Morell. I have three children that go to Newport Harbor High School. I've got a senior, a sophomore, and freshman, and with the baseball field, I, I think I want to share that my oldest played football his entire career, and it was a great experience. But now my freshman is playing on the high school team, which you've heard about, all the things going on, so I want to hit on two of them. One, the break-in that happened at the school, where we don't know who broke in there. We don't know if it was drug addicts, we don't know if it was gang bangers, but we have a facility where people could come in and steal valuable items from our children, and we still don't have any sort of security or camera system to fix that and make parents feel more comfortable about their kids. And then the second thing, the fields, I think you'll see more pictures. I send my child out there every single day, he plays outfield. It is an accident waiting to happen, and as a parent, my job's to keep them safe, and as a school board, I'm hoping that you will listen to these parents and make this field safe for our children in a timely fashion. Thank you.
And after Lauren is Stephen Whitaker.
Good evening Superintendent Smith, President Anderson, Vice President Crane, and Trustees. My name is Lauren Conrady, and I'm here to share my concerns for the safety and security of Newport Harbor's baseball field. To start off, it has not been, had had any facilities renovations in over 40 years. The field is such bad conditions due to the rabbits from ENC eating away on it. It causes the field to be unlevelled, so ground balls tend to pop up at the players, causing injury. Just last night at practice, my seventh grade son at Ensign, who also plays on the Anchors, the feeder team for the high school, took a pop-up ball in his wrist. It was swollen when I picked him up, so we had to ice it. Again, he's only in seventh grade, so the force is much less than that of a high schooler. So the injury that would definitely be greater for Harbor players from all those ground balls. On top of that, the rabbits chewing away at the fencing that's supposed to stop foul balls is into the stand. Zip ties are being used to secure the holes, so spectators don't get hit by the foul balls. Another concern is the feces and urines left on the field from vermin, since we are attached to the ENC. Our players are exposed to it daily, and it can also lead to HPS, Hantavirus Pulmonary Syndrome. Since the players are constantly running through, sliding, and touching the field with their gloves, the feces can be stirred up in the air, which releases the virus when breathed in through airborne transmission. Symptoms are fever, fatigue, muscle aches, and headaches, which sounds like a typical cold to me, so I'm sure our players have been exposed to it. In regards to security issues, the players' weight room is also in poor condition. The whole thing is so old that the door was easily broken into, and the players had over $20,000 worth of gear stolen. When reported, it took the district over six weeks to somewhat fix the door. We also need lighting and security cameras, because the lighting over the baseball field parking lot is close to nonexistent. I am asking that all of our concerns are taken to heart, and solutions are made to keep our players soon, safe sooner rather than later. Thank you for your time.
After Stephen, Tim Pinkert.
My name is Stephen Whitaker, and I was born and raised in Costa Mesa, and both me and my wife attended Newport Mesa schools. We now have four children that are doing or have done the same. I'm here today to talk about the state of the baseball facilities at Newport Harbor High School. The condition of the fields and the facility at Newport Harbor is unacceptable, especially when you compare them to the other high schools in the district. These issues include a vermin and wildlife infestation, drainage and flooding issues in the right field, unlevelled and sloped outfield and infield surfaces, fencing sinkage, and multiple security issues. My son will be a freshman at Newport next year, and he plays outfield. I've raised him to work hard and always give maximum effort. I have seen him put his body on the line, diving for a fly ball, and even leaping into a fence in an attempt to rob a homerun. This type of effort from my son makes me proud of the way he plays the game, but I am concerned for him playing at Newport Harbor if things do not change. I don't want him to change the way he plays, but when you look at things like uneven playing fields and exposed concrete footers along the fence, it's hard not to want him to take it easy. The risk of injury is just too high. I also want to address the importance this has for the student athletes themselves. As a parent who had a child transfer schools because she wanted a better experience in the sport she was so passionate about, I feel I have an understanding on how important these type of things are to the student athletes. These boys and young men love the sport they play, and they want to be proud of the field and facilities they use. The impact on, this has on them is priceless. When a student athlete feels proud of their home, they are so much more likely to thrive. They want to put in the extra work, they're excited to go to practicing games, and they take pride in the school they play for. I urge you to take action for the safety and experience of not only the current baseball players at Newport Harbor, but for those in the future generations to come. Thank you.
After Tim is Edward Wellborn.
Good evening, Superintendent, members of the board. My name is Tim Pinkert. I am the Newport Harbor Baseball Booster President. I'm going to talk a little bit economics, a little bit about the field. I can stand here for 30 minutes and talk about the field, and I think we're getting the point here, but there's, there's economics associated with this as well. I have a junior, second-year varsity player, playing baseball at the Newport Beach, or Newport Harbor, and our outfield fence is falling down. And again, what we're saying is 40 years of major maintenance that has not been done to this facility. It's been put together with Band-Aids, with cords, with parents. It's all been money donated by the parents, and here we are with a dilapidated facility that the things that need to be fixed are so major, we can't raise enough money. We raised $75,000, that's a lot for 50 families in the baseball community, and every dollar of that goes to maintaining that facility. The fence is, is falling down, so what happens is the concrete rises up, and the footers come up. My son, six stitches last year, because he, he ran into the fence trying to catch a ball, and here we are, you know, six stitches later. When I came in this year, the dugouts are unbelievably dangerously close to the field. We put up fences, so the kids wouldn't get hit. We had a kid that, that had, that got a concussion last year, he got hit in the temple. We had a kid that was hit in the face, an opposing team. If I was in a, an opponent playing Newport Harbor, I would not play on this field. And I, again, every dollar that we make, or we, that is donated to us, is spent on that field. What does that mean? We don't get to go to Hawaii, we don't get to...
After Edward is John Damish.
Good evening, board, and we thank you for your time. We need your help. That's what this boils down to. You've been educated this evening. I know you received emails yesterday, but we need your help. My name's Edward Wellborn, I'm also a board member. My son is a junior at Newport Harbor, loves baseball, and every word that these parents are telling you is 100% true. My perspective is a little different, because not only is my son a player, but I'm a board member, which means that we put in a lot of work, and you just heard from Mr. Pinkert and I, things that we've done, for example, the rabbit issue. Not only have I had my own shop back out there cleaning the field, not only the field, but also the spectator area, and why that's important is because frankly, it's disgusting, and it's unhealthy, and we're out there for hours, and we're down, we're spraying it off, we're trying to make it a, as playable as possible for these kids, which frankly, we've done, I think, a good a job as we can, but we need help. Our coach spends many hours, day and night, trying to make the field playable, and he has. We have these safety issues, which we can't overcome now. We spend over half of the money that we raise from parents on the field, just to try to maintain this 40-year-old field that is really unmanageable. I know as soon as we get it playable, two weeks later, it's not playable. The rabbit issue, for example, that became a weekly thing, where on Friday... The rabbit issue, for example, that became a weekly thing, where on Fridays before the games, on Saturdays, parents, including myself, are out there cleaning this up. We have players that have been injured, and what we've done as a board is try to step in to make things safe, if possible. For example, we put netting up because that kid got hit in the face, and we all saw it and thought, this is a problem. We need to do something, and we did. But again, the money that we're using comes directly from the families that are here today talking about this, your constituents. These are serious issues, and again, we're here to ask for your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is John Damish.
Good evening, Board members. Thank you very much for the time to address you tonight. I grew up in New Jersey. I did not grow up here. I aspired to live here. I'm very proud of that. Consider that a success, right? What got me here was baseball. I played in high school. I played for UC Irvine, and I decided to stay in Newport Beach, right? And one of the things that baseball taught me, and no other sport teaches you better than baseball, because what other sport do you fail seven out of 10 times, and you're considered an All-Star? It teaches you how to fail. It teaches you how to get up and teaches you how to recover, right? These are important life skills, right? We learn things through failure. We learn how to ride bikes by falling. We learn material by getting answers wrong. We learn to build companies by trying something new and iterating until something works. We learn to play a sport by practicing and competing. But for this to work, two important elements must be present: safety and security. Maslow identified these two things, right? These are right above basic physiological needs of eating and breathing: safety and security. My son will hopefully play baseball at Newport Harbor. He's in the anchors program. I want him to have the freedom that I did to learn to play this game. I want him to experience personal growth through hard work, failure, adaptation, and the reward that comes with it. I want him to climb that pyramid to earn the love and respect of his peers, his players, his coaches, and other parents. I know these things will produce a resilient, motivated, and compelled person to be successful in life and contribute to society. I expect him to make the appropriate investment in time, energy, and hard work. You've seen tonight the status and the current state of our facilities at Newport Harbor. Now it's time that we make the investment for our kids so they can try, they can learn, they can fail, and they can succeed. So thank you very much for the time. I appreciate it. Good night.
Thank you. Next up is Kian Momany. And following that will be Sharon McDougall.
Thank you Superintendent Smith, President Anderson, and members of the board. My name is Kian Momany, and I'm a current senior at Costa Mesa High School. Books are one of our greatest joys, both as students and as common people. They provide countless amounts of information and allow us to look into worlds we once deemed unimaginable. What concerns me and a lot of my peers, especially now as the board prepares to reevaluate and adjust school curriculum toward the end of the year, are comments previously made before this dais by a few who look to take this experience away from students through a proposed mass removal of books from their hands. Throughout this past year, attempts to ban books reached a record high. Those who advocate for such action claim they want to protect children from difficult ideas and information and to avoid radical messages. To put things in retrospect, this is the same reaction off foreign countries use to suppress free speech and freedom of the press. I myself, being of Iranian heritage, have witnessed this firsthand. We citizens of the United States are granted the right to free speech, freedom of the press, freedom of religion, and the right to petition the government under the First Amendment. This proposed banning of books would do nothing but take away those rights we fought for so hard so many years ago. As students, we understand the importance of learning from just different perspectives and being exposed to diverse ideas. It is through encountering challenging and new topics that we are able to develop critical thinking skills and become well-informed individuals. Banning books that we may not agree with ideologically only limits our ability to learn and grow and does a disservice to the education of the students in our district. Instead of silencing voices, let us strive to engage in respectful discourse and foster a community of open-mindedness and intellectual curiosity. Instead of becoming the book-banning district, let us be the district that allows students to discover the right book at just the right time and allows those unimaginable worlds to become a reality. Thank you for your time.
Following Sharon is Wendy Lys. Thank you.
Members of the board, I'm going to be quickly talking about school choice, but I want to start with this question. Can a child become a member of the opposite sex? Follow the science. It is chromosomally impossible. God made us who we are, XX or XY. You can't change how beautifully He created all of us in His image. Last week, I had the pleasure to go to the Orange County Board of Education meeting to learn more about the email revelations that were showcasing transitioning secrecy and keeping parents out of that decision. And there was a, in defense, Ashley Anderson said that we're not doing that. We're simply affirming children's pronouns. And really, what I need to shed some light on is pronouns are just the beginning of the transition process. The insidious seed grows from there to take a child down a path that statistics show most children will outgrow as an adult, if not transitioned. I was surprised by the dramatic drop in statewide public school enrollment shown at the Orange County Board of Education last week. There's a growing number of parents like myself who have enrolled their children in private schools over the last three years because of plummeting grades and a heightened focus on the LGBTQ equity and inclusion ideologies and lack of focus on academics. California has the highest tax funding education at nearly $25,000 per child, and our schools are ranked 38th in the nation. This brings me to some positive news. State Senator Shannon Grove from Bakersfield recently authored SB Senate Bill 292, the California Education Savings Account Act of 2024. This would allow parents to choose the best school that suits their child's needs and provide a capitalistic approach to education that would improve both public and private schools, assure academic focus, and in the end, teach our kids how to think, not what to think. In closing, ponder the meaning of this Bible scripture, Deuteronomy 23:1. "He that is wounded in the stones, or hath his privy member cut off, shall not enter into the kingdom of the Lord." Thank you.
After Wendy will be Alicia Bee.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Smith. My name is Wendy Lys. I served on this board for eight years, from 1994 to 2002. I had a little break, and then I served on the Costa Mesa City Council for eight years. And I was reelected both times, but we had term limits on the city council. I want to talk to you about a public record request that I made on March 16th, early of this year. This is what I asked for. After reviewing the Whittier School website, I'm unable to find a link or list of current library books. As a taxpayer of Newport Mesa for 50 years, I'm interested in the books in my local elementary school and schools that Westside students attend where I live. To that point, I would like the spreadsheets for library books at Wilson, Whittier, Mona Ray, Enson, and Estancia in Newport Harbor High School. Those are all the schools where Westside kids go. Oh, I forgot T-Winkle. With national controversies over books that some deem appropriate and some deem inappropriate, it is a duty of the Newport Mesa Unified School District Board to be transparent and allow the community, I'm a taxpayer, to see the names of the books that we, the taxpayers, pay for. In June of '22, following the controversy over the Flamer book at Wilson School, the public understood that the district would review all library books at all schools, and I believe you voted for three book-review companies. The district has had plenty of time to review the library books. It is now time that the taxpayers and community members know the names of all library books in our school libraries. There is no legal reason not to be transparent with this information. I've received no email regarding a delay, no communication. We are not interested in book banning. I am the mother of five and the grandmother of five. We want to retain the values in our Newport Mesa community and have our books in the libraries represent those values. There are some books that were at, one book, Flamer, at Wilson School. I don't know if you've seen it, but it is pornographic, and it should never have been there. And I don't think you did a very good job in helping the parent who had the experience of the son bringing the book to her kind of get through that whole thing. It was kind of a closed door. So please, release this list of all the library books. We're entitled to it. There's no reason not to follow through with this public record request. Thank you.
After Alicia is Haley Jenkins.
Good evening, President Anderson, Superintendent Smith, and trustees. The seeds of deception that the district administration attempts to plant illustrates deep-rooted abuses of power and the need to orient with truth to parents and the state of objective reality. At the most recent NMSD board meeting, the district claimed that a gender support plan is not a transition plan. Assistant Superintendent Sarah Jocum is quoted as saying, "We do not transition students to a different gender." At the OCBE meeting on April 12th, she strengthened this position. You can play the problematic language game of the flawed gender-affirming care movement to obscure reality, but the truth is, your GSP fits a varied definition of gender social transition, as the plan literally changes a student's name, gender, and pronoun. At the OCBE meeting on April 12th, Dr. Jocum stated that every single elementary and secondary GSP had parent involvement and approval. President Anderson alleged that there is not a single student in Newport Mesa who does not have parent involvement and support. But the reality is that you do not have parents' consent for all students in elementary and/or secondary. This is a confirmed immoral, unethical, and unlawful practice. In fact, following the leak of emails by the California Alliance for Education, Superintendent Carrie Torres advised district personnel to continue to socially transition minors ages 12 and older without parent knowledge or permission. Verbatim. Yet, she was the one who conducted the investigation and presented falsehoods to the board, an internal investigation that consisted of self-report and an honor code, no method of verification, only blind trust, though some district personnel like Torres are known for their deception. I refute these lies as a request to trustees to continue to investigate the incongruences presented by administration. The current investigation is invalid. If you are truly concerned about the safety of students, the district would cease the secrecy and deception with urgency. It is evident that the district does not understand best practice is related to genders of Sforia, ROGD, or other related subtype. No child is born in the wrong body. Their bodies are just fine. It's their psyches that need healing. Thank you. Genuinely, thank you, trustees Barto and trustee Wigan, for being the only two with intellectual curiosity to pose questions following the mental health practices report at the last meeting. I requested the district immediately adopt a parental rights policy to include language regarding this topic, as you stated publicly via social media. Adopt a parental bill of rights similar to the Orange County Board of Education that includes parental notification of their child's transgender ideation. Such policy is necessary to truly protect our children from serious harm caused by this horrendous gender ideology experiment on our children. Thank you.
After Haley is Debra Klein.
Superintendent Smith, President Anderson, and members of the board, prior to your last meeting over three weeks ago, trustee Pearson, trustee Wigan, and trustee Barto, you all issued statements on your Instagram, so I'm going to read from that right now. You guys said, "It is not the role of schools to hide things from parents, particularly those matters which impact their students' mental health, as the support needed goes beyond what a school can provide. We are committed to a full investigation of these claims and to make parents aware of what happens in the classroom. We will be pushing for a board policy to explicitly address making parental rights and transparency at the forefront of parent and teacher interactions. Parents have the expectation, as do we, board members, that our public schools will educate our children in a manner that recognizes parents as the first educators of their children. We expect NMSD will uphold the standard that parents are the primary decision-makers on important matters that relate to their children." So that is awesome. Thank you all for coming out and saying that. So why is that not being discussed tonight? It's not on the agenda. I haven't seen any updates on your social media or in emails to families on how you are all pushing for a board policy, or any updates on the investigation over the emails about transitioning children. Remember when last year, Wilson librarian Grant Thompson ordered all those pornographic books and then read them to children? And then he was just allowed to quit, and there was supposed to be an investigation, and I asked you all for a library book review committee? And then instead, you hired a library book expert and locked parents out of the online libraries? So is that how the investigation is going to go for this, too? How do families know that the district won't transition their children behind their backs? We heard from President Anderson that that doesn't occur, but how do we know that? Do we just trust that after seeing all these emails and hearing stories from parents and students? I think tonight, there are several people here behind me waiting for you to address this. It's pretty serious, don't you think? Now, I know you are not allowed to respond to me right now, but I think by tomorrow with the latest, some type of statement with more than an assurance of trust us needs to be made to families. And certainly by the next meeting, we should hope to see an updated version of your parental rights board policy, because I just met several new families at a town hall over the weekend, and they were pretty uneasy about a lot of the things happening in this district. And then just quickly, we do not want to ban books. You can still check them out at the library or order them online. We don't want porn in schools. Age-appropriate materials is what we were asking for. Thank you.
Next will be Lee Anne Kanady.
Kanady. Good evening, President Anderson, trustees, and Superintendent Smith. Where do I begin? Parents were locked out of school libraries after pornographic content was found. It's been a year now. The district allowed the librarian, Grant Thompson, to resign without an exit interview, investigation, or discipline. He is now free to do the same in another district. Educational grants from the Newport Mesa Foundation, founded in the name of a former Estancia coach, who was sentenced to five years in prison for sexual misconduct with minors, a registered pedophile who abused children in our district, handing out grants. Gross. You hired Assistant Superintendent Carrie Torres. Just a few years ago, while at Breia Olinda Unified, Carrie was filmed on camera endorsing the sexual engagement between a grown man and a young boy as a historical sexual preference to be taught in school. Again, gross. Socially gender transitioning kids behind parents' backs and then continuing to deny it. The unanimous vote to spend $100,000 on studying the design of commingled restrooms that conveniently conform with the bathroom usage policy and the gender support plan. Counseling and social emotional justice activist curriculum by school counselors without parental consent. Investing in Yale's ruler curriculum to elicit social justice responses. Meanwhile, teachers need mental health days and are breaking down in class because the district thought it was best to spend $1 million on restorative practices and will not discipline students. Unanimously hiring a superintendent who just previously nodded his head in support of defunding the police and creating social justice warriors. He then brought in his friend Sakura Shields with a checkered resume after she was fired up north. Test scores are down. Where's the parental rights policy? You haven't followed through on that, have you? We're not in great shape financially. John Morlock's objective... John Morlock's objective review in Key Measures of Fiscal Health for All 995 California School Districts ranked Newport Mesa a "bottom dweller" as 26 out of 28 Orange County districts. Laguna Beach, the only other Orange County district funded by property taxes, ranked first. For all these reasons and many more, not afforded the time to list tonight, taxpayers should have a resounding vote of no confidence for trustees Wigan, Crane, and Ursulo in 2024. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Leigh Anne Canaday. That's the name. Anyway, I also wanted to speak about parental rights because it seems odd to me that parents have the rights to be obligated for what their kids do, right? They damaged this. They did something bad in school. We have all the rights for anything bad they do, yet we don't have the rights to know what's happening in the school. We don't have the rights to know what's being taught, where their kids are being transitioned without the rights of the parents to know. I just watched some amazing kids speak, I mean, amazing kids. There is no doubt in my mind that their parents weren't involved in everything they did. And they even spoke. He spoke about, sorry, I don't know your name, but you did a wonderful job about, well, behind my parents or my parents agreed with that or, I mean, the whole thing was involved with his parents. And that we're, as a school district, trying to hide things from the parents. I think it's totally wrong and that's all I have to say.
Hi, good evening, all of you here and all of you back here. I'm Libby Hike and I live in Newark Beach. And my daughter's actually 32 years old, so I haven't been in a school district meeting in a long time, but I have heard a lot about all those gender issues that are happening here in the schools and it concerns me. So, I mean, I've also seen this one story of Chloe and many others that are very sad that just the surgery they went through and their bodies will never be the same and they can probably never have kids again. So it's very alarming that I hear about this gender transitioning that's happening in our schools. So I'm just wondering, why are schools doing these gender support policies? Is this about our government taking kids away from our parents, from their parents, so the government can control our kids? Is that really what's happening here? Is this what you want, trustees? Education should be about teaching the three Rs, not about mental issues concerning gender dysphoria. Schools do not own our kids. We, parents, do. From California Alliance for Education, an NMUSD elementary principal emailed school employees to socially transition a student and he said, "We can't change permanent records unless parents consent and there are official protocols followed, but this is a start." So even though the principal knows about required parental consent, this principal feels it's okay for the school to begin a few transition steps, like pronouns, name change in yearbook, awards, and that kind of thing. That is totally unacceptable, especially from a principal. Also, from California Alliance for Education, in 2019, NMUSD Board of Trustees adopted a parental secrecy policy. So in direct violation of the 14th Amendment protecting parents' rights, the school board willingly at that time approved this policy. This is grounds for recall of those trustees. Let me remind you, the 14th Amendment protects the fundamental rights of parents to direct the care, upbringing, and education of their children. And there are other laws that specifically protect parents' rights. Trustees who choose to ignore these laws and instead be persuaded by gender identity mental health employees should be recalled immediately. Period. So what we need now is we do need a parental policy. We need, let's see, there's one that the OCBOE just approved and it is exactly this. It's a parental rights policy and it's a policy developed jointly with and agreed upon by parents, guardians of participating students. This is a mandate from the 20 U.S. Code 6318. I'm sure you're all aware of that, right? Thanks to OCBOE, we now have a comprehensive template for parents' rights policy. I encourage you to do this immediately.
President Anderson, trustee superintendent, and guests. First of all, I was gonna also say, I was so impressed with the high school students that presented today and also the cheerleading squad. They represent the values of this district and it's obvious that they have had a great upbringing and their parents must be so proud. We've been talking a lot about different meetings. One was the Orange County Board of Education meeting that happened on April 12th. I don't know if you've listened to it, I mean, it was like five hours long, but at hour 3:52 minutes, there's about a 12-minute video. I highly recommend watching that and listening to it and for any parents or people in the back there for, to listen to April 12th's Orange County Board of Education presentation starting at hour 3:52. That kind of gives you what a lot of the parents are talking about, if you're not familiar. The baseball parents were very empathetic and they're basically saying that education and academics is what they feel should be focused and they're asking for your help. I'm also one of these people that believes that schools should focus on academics and excellence, so I'm with them on that. What I was gonna just put for the record was, there was something that was disclosed with a public records acquisition and that should be, you know, discussed at some point. There was an email dated April 2nd where a counselor at Newport Mesa responded to the director of Student Services and the counselor, thank goodness, objected to materials that some staff members provided her, or I don't know if it was a her or him, with the subject line, the subject line of the email was, "In honor of Trans Visibility Day." So it wasn't a support thing, it was, it was an actual agenda or ideologically bent item. The counselor says, "This goes far beyond what our role as educators entails. While we hold different roles in this world, that of an educator is far different from that of a parent. Our role as educators is to provide a safe and unbiased environment for students to learn math, science, English, and history. The activities presented here far surpass what is appropriate for educators." And the email goes on and ends with, this is what the counselor said back to the director of Student Services, "As a parent, I would be appalled if these conversations happened with my kids at school. It's an incredible overreach." I, I'm impressed that this counselor pushed back, so my point is, or my question is, I'm hoping that the trustees here will push back as well, listen to parents, also fulfill your campaign policies, those that campaigned on parental rights and transparency in curriculum. Thank you.
Before I get into that, for our next meeting, we're going to be updating the comment cards. I think our baseball player parents that came were given two minutes because it was for one topic and I have a wide variety of topics that are essentially one and they didn't get enough time to speak because other people put a variety of things on their card but then spoke on other topics. So we'll be updating this card so it's fair for everybody to have their full three minutes or if needed, their two minutes. Thank you. The next person up will be Donna Phibus and following that will be Dr. Donald Wolf.
Distinguished board, it is very nice to be here, especially as a grandmother and a former teacher and a former instructor of teachers and having, my two daughters both attended Newport Mesa schools and now I have four grandkids in Newport Mesa schools. So I wanted to congratulate all the parents who have spoken on this same issue because this is the one that concerned me as a teacher who used to teach other teachers to be sure that they respected the parents and always called them in for counsel if there was a situation with, with the children. So parental rights was my reason for speaking. Everyone did such a beautiful job of doing the same thing. And I would just like to reiterate, I know that there was a bill passed or supposedly discussed in the Assembly, AB 1314, which disrespected parents' rights and it was not allowed to be read aloud. And I went to the Orange County School Board meeting and they said, "This sort of thing needs to be referred to each school district to make decisions regarding this." So there's a lot that other people have said that I could reiterate, but I'm not going to take that time since you're short of time. But I just wanted to, first of all, thank the people who have come forward here to speak. Thank the students who have shown the wonderful education that they're getting here and the wonderful opportunities in sports, including my children who have excelled in those things. And I also wanted to thank you because it's a big job and we appreciate your diligence and your communication. Thank you very much.
Superintendent Smith and President Anderson, thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. We've had several heavy topics tonight. I just want to present one more from a different point of view. My topic is wet cement. Noted author, teacher, and child psychologist, Hyman Genot, has written that a child's brain is like wet cement. What falls onto it leaves an impression. Each of you here has been voted into the confidence by grandparents and parents to protect our child's wet cement. Many of you may know, and some of you may not know, about how the brain matures. When is a child and when is a child no longer a child but an adult, free to make their own reasoned decisions? Available on many websites, including the National Institutes of Health, is a definition of the prefrontal cortex, which is the executive part of our brains. The prefrontal cortex relates to the executive functions and abilities to differentiate among conflicting thoughts, to determine good and bad, to determine better and best, to determine same and different, and to determine future consequences of current activities which are working toward a defined goal. It predicts outcomes. It has expectations based on actions and social control, which is the ability to suppress urges that if not suppressed, could lead to socially unacceptable outcomes. The prefrontal cortex is the wet cement that we have entrusted you to take care of in our children. It's a heavy, heavy responsibility. We don't take it lightly. We trust you to uphold the basic standards of stability and good behavior and instead teach academics, not social behavior. Thank you much.
Thank you. Next is superintendent comments.
To the baseball parents, thank you for waiting around and identifying what it was that you wanted to chat about tonight. You know, some of you said this, I think you said, "Safety and security." I had health and safety written down. I think we agree that that's what's paramount here and I had a great chance to meet with some of the folks in the audience and they were kind enough to meet with me right before the break and about the only hour window that I had to hear their concerns about the safety, the security and the well-being of their student athletes. And nothing is more important to the board than those three things for all of our students. Was happy to help them set up a meeting with our team and felt bad that, you know, Lance had an emergency and we had to reschedule, but I know that we're on again and that even Jeff is going to attend this meeting with Lance and walk those fields and see what can be done. So I want to thank you for lifting that up. It's important that we advocate for those issues. The CDM issue, just quickly, I just want to correct for the record because that's what I've been asked to do up here. There was a plan that would look at ADA accommodations at the site. That's all those were drawn to consider. There's no plan, no plan right now, no timeline for doing any improvements at the CDM baseball field, just so we can clarify that and work from a place of what we're actually working towards and what the board has been approving. And that hasn't been a part of the conversation and isn't agendized anytime soon. The safety issue is another big one. You know, when I first got here, within weeks, started to bring safety experts in to say, "What can we do?" Within months, we started our safety task force. They've been meeting since last year, looking at these very issues, meeting with Okayak here at the county level. And they'll be completing that report soon, which gives the board some real direction on where are our most vulnerable sites. But even without those reports being drawn, we knew that there were some areas we had to address soon, some things like school cameras, right? Fencing, especially in this district, is a much longer conversation, but one that I'm sure we're gonna have to have based on the Okayak report. But cameras are something we could work on and so the first phase of camera implementation is happening this semester and it just so turns out that Newport Harbor is one of those schools because of some of the dynamics that you represented. And so we hear you, we're working in multiple avenues to address those issues. The break-in was absolutely unfortunate. We had approved to repair and fortify what I think you call the clubhouse, if I got that wrong, I apologize, but to address that. And I know we've begun that efforts and then someone came in because, as you said, they had some unfettered access, or access rather, to that. I would say that, and I know this doesn't go perhaps far enough, it was the first time since I've been here that we've directed staff to work with parents to expedite the insurance claims, having had to do paper routes and things like that to pay for my first A2000. And those of you that play baseball, you know what I'm talking about. That's a lot. It's a lot for kids. Their bats are astronomically expensive. So we've been trying to work with parents on our end to say, "Let's get that money back." And I know that may not go far enough, but we're gonna keep doing our best to help you in that regard. Again, I'm grateful that Lance and Jeff are going out there and I look forward to hearing what comes out of it and what we might do to better protect the safety and health of the students. With regard to book banning, I would just say to the student, I appreciate all of your comments, just that there isn't a plan for mass removal of books in the district, so if, perhaps you gleaned that from hearing maybe public comments or things online, that isn't something that this district is discussing. We have no interest in the mass removal of books, so that's not happening. And Keian brought that up. The public record request item, we provide as a matter of law, all the records that we have in our care. We work with our attorneys to do so. And I've said that before, I'll continue to reiterate that. For the item of the Orange County Board meeting, I'll go back and watch it again, but I don't, because I did watch President Anderson, I don't remember her mentioning pronouns at all, so I just want to correct the record. I think, you know, we talk about character and facts and things like that. I'll go back and look at it, but I don't remember her commenting on pronouns. I also think that it concerns me when we misrepresent things. I would, I would hope it's not intentionally misrepresenting because there's another word for that. But the emails confirm or prove that no students, there's no proof that students were put on a support plan because of those emails. They proved nothing with regard to that. They do demonstrate that there were intentions of staff that alarmed the board and that's why President Barto, I think her quote was mentioned also, and other trustees said, "We've gotta look into this. We have, we have a third-party team investigating the participation of our staff." That's what those emails show, to suggest- That's what those emails show, to suggest they prove that X amount of students are on support plans without parental consent, it's not accurate. We have looked into it. We have found no students on support plans in this district, zero, without the involvement and consent of parents. And if you know of a parent that knows otherwise, please bring it to our attention. We'll investigate that immediately, as we've done every time these things have been brought to our attention. But to continue to point back to those emails as the proof, to me, is beyond a misrepresentation there. We talked about the district just allowing things to happen. We also had attorneys at the last board meeting that talked about the rights that students have in California with regard to these support plans. And it's pretty clear in law. If there are issues with that, then that is certainly a state issue. I think as someone mentioned, kind of one of the last statements, that Orange County said you should go, you know, advocate for these things at the local school district level relative to Assembly bills and Senate bills. I would say that that's not in the jurisdiction of this board. They don't get to vote on any one of the Assembly bills or Senate bills. And we've talked about that here at this day as before. There is a place to advocate for that. Just to clarify, this isn't that place. And AB 1266 and other protections provided by the state weren't given by this board. But the supports that we provide, and here's the good news for those people that really care about the facts, as we've done these investigations, is that all of them have been done with the involvement and consent of parents. The Wilson Library issue, again, keeps coming up. And I'll say it again, the Destiny system has been live for parents and students in this district all year. So this notion of parents being locked out, Destiny has been live. They can look at that. Also, there are board policies in the district. They're published. Where if a parent wants to challenge instructional materials or content, there's a process for them to do that. And so that's access that parents have, not only to review the content, but to say, I take issue with it and I want to address this. So those things are already in play and we work through them. Then I've got to say, you know, when we run for office, and I didn't run for office, but I certainly applied for this job, and I love serving the students in this district and working with these families to make this district the best. And as such, people can say whatever they want about us. I get that. But I think it's, I think it's beyond unfortunate. I think someone used the word gross. I think it's gross that we intentionally misrepresent the character of people on this team that are protected against defamation claims to take a, you know, several second snippet of Carrie Torres and misrepresent that without the context. That's to me gross. To only mention the one article about Socorro Shields and not the second and third articles and the investigation that was conducted in that county that exonerated her and said it was the school board that was doing illegal things. And she called them out, had the courage to do what so many of you would say leaders need to do, hold electives accountable. She did that. And we continue to make these comments months and months into this. To me, that's gross, right? We can do better than that in this community.
Thank you. Next, we have community input on agenda items. Trustee Whitehead.
Thank you. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items on the, regarding items on the regular meeting agenda. Comments on agenda items are limited to three minutes per comment, up to 20 minutes per topic. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person. Speaker cards for items on the discussion action calendar may be held until that item is considered by the board if the speaker prefers.
We have two items for 21C. Eliza, would you like to go now or would you like to go on the item? Yes?
Good evening, everyone. My name's Elisa Sikaski.
If you could just wait one moment so we can make sure to hear you. Can you please exit the room quietly? Thank you.
Order, please.
My name is Elisa Sikaski, and tonight I'm here to comment on the agenda number 21C, Human Resources Upcoming Retirement Announcement of the Well-deserved Retirement of 30 Years of Service Coast Mesa Middle School and High School Music Director, Mrs. Yandy Gilbo. I've been on the board for four years and a booster parent for five years, currently as auditor and previously as the treasurer and VP. Over the last four years, the band boosters financial records show a total of donations to Coast Mesa Middle School and High School of over $120,000 for the coaches that support the music director at Coast Mesa Middle School and High School, serving grades, students grade seven through 12th grade. These are going to be big shoes to fill. Mrs. Gilbo is supported by these coaches with the support of the band boosters. And these students, grades seven through 12th, are involved in beginning band, intermediate band, advanced band, marching band, orchestra, festival orchestra, jazz one, jazz two, drum line, and winter guard, all under the direction of one person with the support of the band boosters. We fund the, our income, and I brought a copy of our 2021, 2022 profit and loss tax records, and we, it generally runs between $100,000 to $135,000 a year in support of the music program at Coast Mesa Middle School and High School. As a Title I school, the middle school and high school families cannot afford to contribute. They do what they can. And we, as a board, we would appreciate the trustees and Newport Mesa to provide more funds towards these programs. The students who participate as members in the teams are supported and accepted and encouraged to become their authentic selves, as well as gain leadership skills year after year. The students are taught personal accountability and the competitive environment fosters an elite athletic mentality, though this program is not supported in similar ways as other athletic programs. This year, both my students, grades 12th and ninth, are part of the color guard team. And the color guard team is more than 50% rookies this year. They competed locally, nationally, and internationally this season. The winter guard team made finals at both national regionals and promoted three levels in their home circuit versus last year's finish. The local circuit...
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you would like to, you can email it to us, too.
Yeah, you bet.
Next up is Rin. It's difficult to read this. Shakshister?
Sikaski.
Ah, thank you.
Hello. My name is Rin Sikaski. My pronouns are they/them. And I'm speaking as a student, a part of the Costa Mesa High School instrumental program and color guard. I've been in this program since eighth grade and I'm now a senior. I've done every program available and participating in all of these performing arts has been a huge benefit to me in gaining confidence, new skills, and a community I haven't found comparable to any of the other clubs and activities I've done at Costa Mesa High School. I've joined color guard last August and it's, I've been pushed even further into the world of performing arts, and it's inspired me to join an independent guard after high school. Our team plans to attend the WGI World Championships in Dayton, Ohio next year. And our team plans to attend the WGI World Championships in Dayton, Ohio next year. And it's the next step on their path to representing Costa Mesa High School's greatest attributes. And we need financial support to accomplish this, as well as another amazing director to support, to sustain the level of support Mrs. Gilbo has given this instrumental program and color guard for her time being here. This program is extremely important to me and I want it to continue to be amazing even as I graduate into June. Thank you.
Thank you. And we also have one for Wendy Lee's on item number 22. Would you like to do it now or when the item comes up? All right.
Good evening, Superintendent, President Anderson, members of the board. My name is Wendy Lee's. I am a credential teacher in the state of California, always interested in, in this case, number 22, approve elementary history, social science instructional materials for adoption. I am familiar with reading the reports that are attached to the agenda item. And in this report, it does not say the dates that this material was put on 30-day review. So maybe it was, maybe it wasn't, but that would be useful information to me because if it wasn't, then that's kind of something fell through the cracks. And if it was, it needs to be on there. But to that point, years ago, before Sanborn was remodeled, I could go in as a trustee and sit down, because it was before the internet and, you know, the 90s, and I could look at the actual hard copies of books. And the wall that faces the parking lot now was like that big, and it had all of the books that have been approved for, by the board for review. And so anybody in the public, any taxpayer could go and see, you know, what's in our classrooms now. But now, if you go across there, there's a littleittybitty bookcase. They're not in order. Now, it's been a couple of months since I've been there, but they're not in order. And it's just kind of unorganized. I'm OCD a little bit, so I'd like, I wanted to get the history, get the health, and get the math, all in order. But that is an important part of your responsibility to allow the public, and now that we are concerned a little bit more about what's being taught in our classrooms, it should be easy for a taxpayer or a parent or a grandparent to go in and say, oh, I want to look at this, or I want to look at that. So was this, did this have the 30-day approval or not? That's my question.
Yes. It's on orange. Next, we have Ms. Shields and Ms. Dale Pash, a report on English learners.
Yes, good evening and thank you. I'd like to introduce our Director of Multilingual Programs, Laura Del Pash, who has a team with her to share the great work that's been going on. And while she gets ready, I just want to share that this year, we sent a team to CABE, which is a large conference, the California Association of Bilingual Educators. And there were probably over 5,000 educators anxious to be together since the last time. You know, it's been several years. And what I'm so proud about, and I think the community should be really proud about, is that our team was selected, our team of Tosas and Laura, to present to a community of educators. Their rooms were sold out, if you would. There was standing room only. People were, probably hundreds were turned away, and people were engaged and happy with the experience they had in these sessions, sharing the expertise of our professionals, our teachers, and their strategies and skills and what they do in the classroom, and our programs. So with that, I hand it over to Laura to share more about what's happening in our classrooms and in our programs.
Thank you so much. I wasn't going to include that. Thank you. We had a great time at CABE. So Superintendent, President Anderson, trustees, and cabinet, thank you so much for the time to share this evening. I have the great privilege of working with our multilingual learners and their families. We have a lot to share with you, so I'm going to do my very best to be brief, and I know it's already late in the evening. But we do want to share some of the work that we've done, the impact and the services that we provide for our multilingual learners. It's hard not to give some background, but at times I will share a little bit of background and context, so you have that as well. So we're going to lead with our California English learner roadmap. And this is a policy put forth by the California Department of Education. It's grounded in four principles and the elements you see here. There won't be a quiz, don't worry. But I just want to bring your attention to this because all of our work with multilingual learners is grounded in the English learner roadmap. And we, in all of our trainings and meetings with staff, we illuminate this and we ensure that they are aware of the principles in the roadmap. And we are always trying to increase our efficiencies with these principles and these elements. We have two main overarching goals for our English learners. These also come from the California Department of Education. The first one is that our English learners acquire full proficiency in English as rapidly and effectively as... Is that our English learners achieve rigorous grade-level academic standards that are expected of all of our students. And those two goals lead into reclassification, which is our ultimate goal, that our students become English proficient. These goals, again, are reinforced with our staff in all meetings and trainings so that they're aware of these. In our work with multilingual learners, we have an asset-based approach. So again, what this means is that we recognize all of our multilingual learners, bring assets to their learning, and we leverage those assets to advocate for our students. This is by no means an exhaustive list, but these are some of the assets that our students bring when they enter our schools. I want to point out language development in particular. We really value language development as an asset our students bring. And so we ensure that our students have access to the core curriculum regardless of their language level, and that their language level does not preclude them from involvement in any of our programs, including being identified as gifted and talented learners. Again, we reinforce this asset-based approach in all of our work. We share this exact slide with our staff in any meetings and trainings that we have. So don't want to get too bogged down in numbers, but here's some general English learner data. Our data literally changes every day. So this, you can see our date was March 17th, and it's changing daily as we gain new students and we're reclassifying students. So you can see our number of English learners there represents about 16% of our overall population. Of that number, about 1,000, a little over 1,000 are long-term English learners. We recognize that number is too high, and that is a focus of our work to try to give students the supports they need and lower that number and have our long-term English learners reclassified. Newcomers are a rapidly growing number in our district daily. And so at the time of our data pool, there were 330 newcomers. Just to clarify, when I use the term newcomer, we use the state, this number represents the state and federal definition. So that's students born outside of the US and in the US schools three years or less. So of that number, probably closer, a little, you know, closer to 200 are actually first-year newcomers, newcomers in need of service. You'll see we have lots of languages represented in Newport Mesa. People are often surprised. So our largest language is Spanish, but we do have over 30 languages represented as well. Our most rapidly increasing languages are Ukrainian and Russian. So I will share of that newcomer number. At this data pool, it was about 40 Ukrainian and Russian students. And in the last month, that has grown at least 20 students. So you can see how quickly in a month we've, and that doesn't include today, so. I know we received some new students today. So that definitely is a population we're addressing and being responsive to. And then you see our numbers of current reclassified students and students who were initially English proficient when they entered school with us. Then if you want me to pause for questions or if you're just going to ask when you want to? Okay.
Just for the interests of the public, can you define long-term English learner?
Yes, I'm sorry. So that's our students that have been in our California schools six years or more, identified as an English learner.
Thank you.
So reclassification, you'll remember I shared those two goals, that we want to achieve that English proficiency and the academic standards. And so our goal is to reclassify our students. This is a great visual, and it shows you those four criteria. We won't go into great depth, but those criteria are set forth by ed code, so those come from the state. And that first one with English language proficiency, the overall level of four on the LPAC, which is our state language assessment, that is mandated by the state that students have an overall four. And then we also look at their basic skills, some standardized tests there, teacher evaluation... or report card grades, and then also parent consultation. We ensure that our students have an, or, excuse me, our parents have an opportunity to consult on their students' reclassification status. This is some reclassification data over the last five years. So you'll see our number of ELs in each year, how many students were reclassified, and what percent of the EL population that represents. This really is where we measure our impact of all of the work we do and all of the professional development and programs, to see the impact on our students reclassifying. We also want to appropriately reclassify students. So we want to make sure that they meet those measures and they're getting, they get those supports so that they can appropriately reclassify. You will notice that in 2020, 2021, we had a little dip. You can all take a guess, something happened in March 2020, right at the beginning of our LPAC window, testing window, and so LPAC testing ceased. And so our reclassification is based on the year prior. So that put a little wrench in reclassification processes across the state. And so we were able to pick up a little bit the next year, some of our students that needed to be reclassified. But that, that's what accounts for that dip. This year, you see there's an asterisk because we're still in progress. So we're very proud we reclassified 400 students to date. And so we do the bulk of our reclassification in December because we wait for grades and test scores, but we continually reclassify as students meet those criteria. So hopefully, we'll have that number go up a bit. And you'll see that last data point there, our students on IEPs. So just about four years ago, we implemented an alternate reclassification process for our students on IEPs. And so that's a total number over the last few years. We've reclassified over 300 students on IEPs, and we'll continue to engage in that process for our students on IEPs.
Thank you. And then, Trustee Murphy, did you have a question on this slide?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, not necessarily, just a general question about whether you have enough Ukrainian and Russian speakers, interpreters and teachers? That sounds like an awful lot of students.
So we utilize, we contract out with a agency for interpreters and also to translate our documents for Russian and Ukrainian. So we're, we're hanging in there. It also includes a, like, on-demand service, so we can get someone on the phone within 15 minutes to help us interpret. So that's, that's nice. Yeah.
Thank you.
So this is a snapshot of our Intervention Compass or ELMER program. So many of you probably have seen this or heard of this. But this is one data wall, and we use this reclassification wall as a tool in several ways. So this is a example of a true data wall. This happens to be an elementary one. And so for reclassification, this filters for all the English learners at the site, and then it has the data that's relevant to reclassification. So those four criteria I shared with you, this shows that data. It's color-coded to show if students have met the criteria or if they're in progress. And so at each site, we have an English learner coordinator that is a teacher that helps support reclassification and progress monitoring. So our teachers utilize this wall, as do our principals and staff, to help reclassify students. The actual process is done and housed at ELMER for the compliance piece. But we also use this wall for progress monitoring. So we're able to look at where students are, and maybe there's a criteria or a support they need, and so we're able to help use this to move students towards reclassification. As a side note, we have other walls we utilize. We have a English learner, an LTAL progress monitoring wall, an LPAC wall, that have some different data points that schools utilize as well. So again, in that spirit of reclassification, thinking about those two goals of English proficiency and grade-level standards, we have two initiatives that my team has really worked hard to implement at the school sites, LPAC awareness and goal setting. So LPAC awareness is really that motivational piece to really get kids motivated for a standardized test, which is often hard, and to help them understand the purpose and the impact. You'll remember that that first criteria, they have to score a four overall, and they get one chance per year, and that's state mandated. So these sessions are really to help motivate students and, and help them to understand the importance of that testing. And then, goal setting, our individualized sessions with students to look at criteria a couple of times a year. We have made it an expectation that students in grades six through 12 all engage in goal-setting sessions. Some of our sites choose to have additional grades participate, but all of our sites are implementing that goal setting. Both of these sessions are conducted based on the context of the school. So it might be a classroom teacher, it might be the EL coordinator at the site, it might be my English learner TOSAs, it might be a combination of those. So this is an example of some of our goal-setting sheets in elementary and a secondary. And a great example is, just before break, we did some goal-setting. One of my secondary TOSAs was able to go to the T-Winkle Avidic cell classes and engage in a full-class period of goal-setting and empowering students to find their data and see where they fall in reclassification and what strategies they can empower themselves to get towards that reclassification criteria. So here's another kind of data tool that we use in our work for English learners. And so this is a, a growth dashboard, so it's in Tableau. This has been created in collaboration with the assessment team, so I thank them for their collaboration with this. When we look at second language acquisition, it's very important to look at the growth, the development, and have reasonable expectations. For example, our students who just came today from Russia, it would not be reasonable that they would reclassify by next December, okay? Sometimes they do, but that would not be reasonable. But we do want to be sure to measure growth and see that they are making adequate progress. And so this is another tool that we use. So the growth bar that you see includes students in the 2021, 22, those are the two LPAC administration years, students that reclassified, scored a level four and stayed there, or grew a level on the LPAC. So it shows that they've made growth. The same bar shows students who stayed at the same overall level, and drop is students who actually dropped a level. The null is students who didn't have two years of growth. So they might be a kindergartner, they might be a new student. And so we utilize this as a tool. This has been a great tool with our principals. So we engaged in data chats at the elementary and secondary level. When you hover on the bars, you actually see individual students. And so principals were able to take some of their students in those middle two bars and do case studies, and talk about ways to strategize and improve instruction for individual students. So it's been really exciting. This is the first year we've had this growth tool. We recognize that we want that growth bar to be higher, and so we're striving towards that. We're going to get into some of the elementary and secondary specifics of our work, and just to ground that, we just want to make sure you have these two terms in your tool belt. Our approach for designated, for ELD includes designated and integrated ELD. And essentially what that means is our designated ELD time is driven by our ELD standards, and then taught through content, and our integrated time is led by content with, with language supports. So you're going to hear a little bit about elementary and secondary. Elementary designated time is really a grouping for students at their proficiency level, and their integrated time is with their classroom teacher. And secondary designated ELD is a course. So that's a class they typically take, and then their integrated is in all of their subjects, history, social studies, math, and they're receiving their integrated through that model. So that will help kind of ground some of the discussion with, for elementary, secondary. Lots we could talk about in both, but we'll just give you a couple highlights in elementary. We have, but really focused our efforts on that designated piece because that's the intensive language development, and so my team really works on the models. We have schools, remember, from everything from three English learners all the way to 300 English learners. So our context is very different. So how we approach a designated ELD with three is different than 300. We've made a strong connection. Our core ELA program is Wonders, and our ELD program is Wonders. So we make that strong connection with the curriculum. We've made that connection with early literacy integrity this year. And then progress monitoring. Progress monitoring has been a real focus over the years, especially this year. We want our groupings to be fluid, and we want to see that students are making progress and that we're able to move them in groupings in real time if they're able to move. So that's a little bit from elementary. Secondary, I want to acknowledge, we have an ELD curriculum committee. That is made up of our secondary ELD teachers that teach those courses, some administrators, a counselor, and myself. And through that committee, we've been able to do quite a bit in helping with the consistency across our program across the district. We have a placement criteria for our ELD classes now. We engage in placement meetings to ensure that our students are placed appropriately. We have a consistent writing prompt we use for placement. And then again, progress monitoring. We've used curricular tools to make sure we're progress monitoring students and moving them in those classes if they can move, move the levels. Professional development. So before I, I get into the professional development, I do want to acknowledge my six teachers are here. We are fortunate, we have four elementary EL TOSAs and two secondary. In each of those levels, we have one focused on newcomers. So my six teachers are here, they braved it. They stayed. So stand up, stand up. I promised them they wouldn't need to present, but they are the heart and soul of all of the professional development that, work that happens for our English learners. Our approach in both elementary and secondary is growth. We want to see growth for teachers, growth for students. It's asset-based, it's differentiated. So you can imagine, again, working with those varieties of numbers of English learners at different sites. And then all of our work is research-based, and it's practical. So these ladies don't just do whole-staff PDs, they are in the classroom every day, working with students and teachers. Sometimes they just jump right in, they're co-teaching, they're modeling, and they're doing all of that work. That's the work they shared at CABE, which is super exciting that we're at the next level of being able to share our work with other professionals across, really, the nation. So, and coaching. They do a lot of coaching, taking teachers from where they are and helping them move forward. So just a couple highlights for our elementary PD. We've connected to the Thinking Maps Initiative. Thinking Maps are a great tool for all students, but especially English learners. So all of our PD connects there. We've done case studies. When we go out to a school site, we take students at that school, and we really make it meaningful for the individual site and lesson series. So we don't do a shot in the arm where we come show up for a minute and leave. We do lesson series, ongoing coaching, ongoing cycles, so that we can really make that impact. I'm going to stop talking and turn it over to one of our principals, Dr. Hogard. At Ray Elementary, they have more than embraced our professional development and a lot of our initiatives, and they have the numbers to show that success with reclassification. So Dr. Hogard's going to share some highlights of their program.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you. Good evening, President Anderson, Trustees, Superintendent Smith, Cabinet, Staff, and Community. At Ray Elementary, our team is committed to accelerated achievement in all core content areas, including English language development. Our goal is for all of our students currently classified as English learners to acquire English proficiency in reading, writing, listening, and speaking towards achievement at grade level and beyond, and reclassification to fluent English proficient. One of our big-picture, school-wide achievement targets is that our instruction aimed at students achieving reclassification will be so robust that we will not have any students enter middle school as long-term English learners. Our site work is... Our site work is supported by Director Dale Pash and the English Learner TOSA team through professional development, classroom coaching, and support for parent engagement. The EL TOSAs have provided professional development to our staff each trimester this year. The content of the professional development is based on district priorities, the analysis of student data from the LPAC and other assessments, as well as input from our teaching staff. Professional development topics this year have included research-based best practices for both designated and integrated ELD instruction, and using LPAC data to plan for ELD instruction. The content and format of the Wednesday professional development time is highly valued by our teaching staff. The content is anchored in the data that's specific to our current student progress. We spend time at the beginning with the presentation of the content altogether, followed by breakout groups facilitated by the EL TOSAs in order to more specifically target standards and skills of each grade level across the TK to sixth-grade continuum. With every PD session, there's an offer for onsite classroom follow-up, and the TOSAs leave with appointments scheduled for follow-up conversations and time in classrooms. One of the ways that the EL TOSAs have provided onsite support this year is with goal-setting in reading, writing, listening, and speaking for our sixth-grade students who are currently classified as English learners. The TOSA team assisted by organizing each student's data into a student-friendly visual format, like you saw in the presentation, for a goal-setting coaching session with each of our students. The goal-setting included a direct conversation about the criteria to reclassify, and this provided our older students with feedback based on their recent assessment scores and engaged them in a positive conversation about their goals moving forward. We are very proud at Ray of the significant number of students who met the goals for reclassification so far this year. Our number so far is 45. And we look forward to continued focus in this area so that all of our students currently classified as English learners achieve our FEP status before we promote them into middle school. Parent engagement is an important part of our work. During our ALAC meetings, we provide parent education on our instructional program, ELD instruction, and reclassification process. At the beginning of the school year, our full-time school community facilitator, thank you so much, led a multi-week parent orientation session focused on equipping parents with knowledge of our school programs. After the winter break, we offered the Latino Family Literacy Program, a six-week series to engage our parents in reading at home with their students. The sessions were led by our site school community facilitator and the district lead school community facilitators. During our, during each session, parents learned strategies to read aloud to their children and prompt discussion about books to enhance vocabulary and comprehension. All of the participants took the same book title home and came back the next week to share reflections about their home read-aloud experiences. As part of this program, parents were also able to write their own book to share family stories and photos. In addition to our robust instructional program during the school day, we are committed to engaging our students in meaningful learning after school. Parent input from recent years at our site prompted the addition of the Heritage Language Program after school to build language and literacy skills in Spanish. This after-school series was so popular with our families that we filled to capacity of 100 students within a day of opening the registration process. So I would like to thank Director Dale Pash and her team for their ongoing support of our students, staff, and community. We appreciate their partnership and support to ensure that Ray School is a place where our students who enter as English learners thrive as learners and reclassify as fluent English proficient before moving on to middle school. Thank you.
And that picture is Dr. Hogard and many of her students at their reclassification celebrations. Very exciting. So moving on to secondary professional development, very happy, just about two years ago, when Assistant Superintendent Torres and Dr. Mike Shaka came aboard, because as they created a focus for secondary professional development, ELD was not a side note. It was embedded in that focus, and it's embedded in all of the professional development in the last few years that we have engaged in at the secondary sites. So Dr. Shaka is going to talk about that.
Thank you, Laura. President Anderson, Dr. Smith, members of the Board, Executive Cabinet, guests, thank you for having us tonight. I just wanted to speak and elaborate a little bit on what Laura was mentioning in regards to the designated versus integrated focus of, of English language. I wanted to talk... I wanted to talk a little bit about the importance of the integrated approach. And again, integrated means what the kids are getting in their normal core classes every day. What sort of strategies do we use to promote language development, not just in their ELD class, but in English, math, science, history, PE, all the classes the students will take? So what we had was our focus on eliciting and responding to student thinking. If you haven't heard that phrase yet, get ready because you're going to hear it a lot. That has been our focus, that is our focus, and that will continue to be our focus moving forward. Elliciting and responding to student thinking really is our way of saying, we want kids to think and we want kids to share their thinking all the time in class. And can you imagine how well you would develop in, in your English language if you were spending all day, every day, all of your classes, sharing your thinking, both orally and in writing? Pretty fast. And I think the data that we, that we have seen and that we will see moving forward is going to, is going to play that out. So listening and responding to student thinking is our focus. And what we've done is we've really picked a few strategies that happen to be ELD strategies, but are also really good teaching. Strategies like stronger, clearer, and critique, clarify, connect. Those have been strategies that we've been focused on all year in all of our classrooms that are high-leverage English language development skills, but it's also fantastic high-level learning for all of our students. So the more we can integrate those two things and make valuable learning experiences for all of our students, it's a win-win. How we've done that is focusing through our instructional coaches. Thank you for your support with our instructional coaches. They are invaluable, and if they are listening, thank you. Our instructional coaches are coaches at each site. We have a number of them at each of our secondary schools. And their charge is to design and implement high-level professional development focused on our instructional strategies. Then to support the implementation of that professional development through feedback conversations and support with their fellow staff members. That's been a model that's been effective that we want to continue to highlight and move forward. And finally, data. How do we know that it's working? How do we know that this is effective? We've been spending a lot of time looking at data. Laura showed some of the reclassification data. It is still early in the game to look at some of that, but we are very, very optimistic that it's going to yield some positive results. All of our predictive indicators are showing a, a very positive trend. So we continue to monitor data, assess the direction, and then make adjustments as we go. So that's just a quick glimpse into what's happening in the world of secondary ELD. Thank you, Laura.
So again, we could probably do a whole nother hour on newcomer supports. We won't do that, but this is just a general list. Newcomers are a growing population, and we do provide specific supports for our newcomers, and we're being very responsive, especially as our languages are changing. I did mention that we, last year, we were able to add two TOSSAs to our team that are funded through Title III, and they are focused on newcomer supports. And so that has made a huge difference in the impact that we can make for our students. We have a specialized curriculum. We provide professional development in the format of a whole-staff PD, say for Eastbluff, that had a great increase, so we did a whole-staff PD there. It could be individualized coaching for teachers, pushing into the classroom for integrated support. We have a student intake where we meet individually. These two TOSSAs have been able to meet individually with students, especially at the secondary level, to learn their story, learn what their family's needs might be. And so that's been exciting. We have an adaptive online program that we really vetted and piloted last year that we're specifically using for newcomers in the elementary level, especially at home. So Imagine Learning is a program that our elementary students can use at home for added English practice. Parent engagement of our newcomer parents is really important to us. Again, just did a session at Eastbluff for some of our Russian parents. And then many of you know our Summer Language Academy. I think we're going on our seventh year, and we received an award for that through Cal State Fullerton. So exciting, that focuses for our secondary newcomers on community and their culture, as well as language support. So that's very exciting. Parent engagement also could be a whole nother topic, but, or presentation, but engagement of our English learner parents is very important to us. And we do that in a variety of ways. I have the pleasure of coordinating our school community facilitators. We are up to 22 facilitators, which is very exciting. And so we utilize them for that engagement, as well as our ALAC committees and our DILAC and our parent education series that Student Services helps support. So you are going to hear from our DILAC chairpersons in June, when they come back with a full report. But we did want to invite one of our parents up. Our ALACs all send a representative to our DILAC committee, and it's a great way for our English learner parents to engage. We do have required topics from ed code, so we try to make them exciting. But we also generate topics. Our first meeting, we always elicit topics, and then our DILAC board decides which topics we're going to move forward with. So we try to do that balance in our meetings. But we have Mrs. Ramirez. She is going to come up and share a little bit about her experience with DILAC. So Mrs. Ramirez is going to share in Spanish, and then Jaclyn will translate for us. We'll give Javier a break for a few minutes.
Hola buenas tardes, Presidente Anderson, Superintendent Smith, and all of the members of the Director's Board. I present. My name is Carmen Ramirez. I have four children, three of whom have been reclassified. Two graduated from the school, a student of the last year in the Costa Mesa School, and a child in the Palarino School in fifth grade. I have more than 22 years as a volunteer in the community of the District of Newport Mesa. I have participated in different committees of the schools. Currently, I am the president of DILAC and representante and president of ALAC in the two schools of my children's. I have also participated in PTA, the school administration, in the joint with the superintendent. I have funded funds for soccer for my daughter and for various other activities. I will talk about DILAC, a committee that has given me a lot of help and for my parents and for our families. We feel like we're at home, even though we have interpretation in different languages. For example, the Fair of Resources, where different organizations come. We have also participated in workshops, such as Grupo Crecer, CAVE, and have helped our students to feel proud. I have also participated in PTA, a school-site council, meetings with the superintendent, soccer boosters, and volunteered in different school activities. I will talk about DILAC, a committee that has been very helpful to many parents. We feel at home, since we have interpretation in different languages. And apart from the required topics, they also bring other exciting topics, such as a resource fair, where various organizations come. Also, we have participated in workshops, such as Grupo Crecer, CAVE. They have, they have helped our students feel proud. They feel they are part of English learners, and there are no barriers to go to college. Most of our school community facilitators support their school representatives during the DILAC meetings. Our school community facilitators are a vital piece in each school for both students and parents. They are the link between the school and the community, and they keep us informed of all the resources. Thank you very much for all your support. Thank you, President Anderson, for attending every DILAC meeting. If one of you, of you would like to attend one day, you are all welcome to do so. Thank you so much, Mrs. Ramirez. Thank you so much for your kind words. Thank you.
Thank you, Jaclyn and Mrs. Ramirez. She will be back in June, as I said. So we're coming to a close. Again, dual immersion, whole nother presentation, but we just want to illuminate that is part of our multilingual programs. We have our Spanish and Mandarin programs at the schools listed. We are up through 7th grade and will continue 8th grade next year and then on to high school. We have just under 450 students currently participating in both programs, so that's very exciting. As we, we close out, always, we're going to continue all of this great work and impact for our students, but just to highlight three areas that we are really focusing on. Areas of continued growth are LTALs and supports and services for them to get them to reclassification. As we've mentioned several times, our newcomers and families from non-Spanish-speaking families, as that is, our, our numbers are growing. And then progress monitoring. We want our students to move, we want them to show growth, and so we want to move them in real time. We're not waiting till the end of the year. So all of our progress monitoring tools are an area of continued growth for us. So questions?
Trustee Crane.
So I know that Eastbluff Elementary, which is one of my, my schools, has been affected by newcomers, and I know that the district has been very supportive in, you mentioned a full-time resource teacher or support. I think you, you sent over there for, to help the teachers. My question is, so you said they're mostly from Russia, Ukraine, Kazakhstan? Well, I knew that part, you didn't mention it. So aside from the academic assessment that you make when you onboard them, do you also do a social-emotional assessment because they're coming from a traumatic, you know, situation?
Yes. So we have an intake that we do for elementary and secondary. It's obviously, looks a little different in those grade levels, but it does account for some academics, as well as social-emotional, some, some different types of questioning to just have our teacher get to know the student, get to know their story. Sometimes the questions go in different ways based on what they share, and then that's a supportive, additional supportive adult that they connect with. But we do have a tool that we use, and we're constantly refining to, to get some of that information about our newcomers.
Thank you. I really enjoyed the report.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, team. Any other questions?
Can you give me a little bit more detail on the Summer Language Academy? That sounded really interesting. I know we've done it for seven years, but I think it's the first time I've seen it presented to us.
So it is a partnership and collaboration with Cal State Fullerton. They help us with our curriculum and the professional development. It is for our newcomer secondary students, incoming grades eight through 12. It's three weeks. It's evolved a little bit over the years, and we were able to continue during COVID. So we moved online during COVID. We didn't cancel, and then we've kind of evolved. But we have team teachers, secondary teachers of all content areas. So we have science teacher. I think I have a history/social studies teacher, so they're not necessarily ELD teachers. And they receive some intense professional development, and we co-teach the classes. And they're really unique learning experiences, kind of project-based learning, incorporating the arts so that students can really express themselves and explore their culture in a multilingual setting. So it's, it's very exciting. And then teachers receive like debrief and coaching after each day in the summer. So it'll be three weeks in the summer, about four hours a day. Dr. Shaka's been great about coordinating so that it will be a different timeframe than our regular summer school. So students can participate if they need to make up credits in the regular summer school, and then also participate in Summer Language Academy. We provide transportation. It's for all students. It will be at Estancia, but it, it, we provide transportation for students that want to come as well. We invite you to come visit this summer. It's great.
That'd be cool.
Yeah.
Trustee Bartow.
Thank you. And I was going to say, I have visited the Summer Language Academy before COVID. You would love it. It's really, really cool. Thank you for the robust report, and I just wanted to say a special thanks for all the focus on the LTAL, because I know that's been an area of focus for a long time, and it's great to see the progress that we are making.
Trustee Murphy.
Yes, I wanted to congratulate you and thank you for all of your hard work. The, the stats were, are looking obviously good and going in the right direction, so thank you. I know it's a lot of work. I also wanted to thank Carmen, who is a Costa Mesa's own mom and is a huge asset to our community. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for all you've done for our students, for our kids, in all these years. I hope you, even, even when your kids are finally gone out of, out of Newport Mesa, that you, you stick around with us. You're such an asset to our community, such a light, and we appreciate you very, very much, everything that you've done for our students and to make this community a better place. So thank you.
I'd have to get back to you exactly on the exact numbers for each of those classes. I could give you a ballpark, but don't quote me. I want to say Mandarin is about 14, and I believe Ensen is about 30 in that 7th grade class, those 7th grade classes. Thank you. And I wanted to say thank you so much for the focus on LPAC. I know it was something that was brought up several times in DILAC, and the parent training and videos and ability for parents to now know how they can help their children really advanced, I think, has been instrumental this year, and we're seeing the results of that. And thank you, Dr. Hogard, as always, for the amazing progress that you, and the commitment that you show at every single school that you are a part of, and involving the parents and everything. Thank you very much.
I do just hope I could close with a couple thank yous. It does take a lot of advocacy for this work to happen, and I really want to acknowledge Assistant Superintendent Torres and Assistant Superintendent Shields. They really support all of our work and advocate for our students, and so I appreciate that. As well as I want to acknowledge Director Vanessa Gailey. Until just about a year ago, until a year ago, English Learner Programs was, was on her docket, and so a lot of what you saw tonight was, was part of her, her foundation building, and so we appreciate all of her efforts as well. And she continues to advocate for our students as well. So thank you.
Thank you. 19, update on integrated pest management. Mr. Shager.
So we have a pesky topic for you tonight. We have Lance Bidnick, who is our Director of Maintenance and Operation. He is also our designated Integrated Pest, Integrated Pest Management Plan Coordinator. Mr. Bidnick.
All right. Good evening, President Anderson, Trustees, Dr. Smith, Cabinet, and guests. Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to present this. and the parent training and videos and ability for parents to now know how they can help their children really advanced, I think, has been instrumental this year. And we're seeing the results of that. And thank you, Dr. Hoag, as always, for the amazing progress that you and the commitment that you show at every single school that you are a part of and involving the parents and everything. Thank you very much.
I do just hope I could close with a couple thank yous. It does take a lot of advocacy for this work to happen. And I really want to acknowledge Assistant Superintendent Torres and Assistant Superintendent Shields. They really support all of our work and advocate for our students. And so I appreciate that. As well as I want to acknowledge Director Vanessa Gailey. Until just about a year ago, until a year ago, English learner programs was on her docket. And so a lot of what you saw tonight was part of her foundation building. And so we appreciate all of her efforts as well. And she continues to advocate for our students as well. So thank you.
Thank you. 19, update on integrated pest management. Mr. Shager.
So we have a pesky topic for you tonight. We have Lance Bidnick, who is our Director of Maintenance and Operations. He is also our designated Integrated Pest Management Plan Coordinator. Mr. Bidnick.
All right. Good evening, President Anderson, trustees, Dr. Smith, cabinet, and guests. Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to present this. As said, my name is Lance Bidnick, Director of Maintenance and Operations. And I am the district's IPM coordinator. I prepared a slide deck. I don't know where it is or how to get it up. Thank you very much. Okay. I've prepared a slide deck for you. And this is just an outline of where our board policy is and how our integrated pest management program aligns to this policy. Some of the key points in our policy and our program, really, it's for the long-term control of pests. And that ranges from anything from cockroaches and ants, rats, mice, rabbits, and weeds. So some of the key points here, we really focus on the long-term pest control using the least toxic methods as our primary response. But before I begin with the rest of the slide deck, what I really want to understand is, do you have any specific questions that I could tailor this presentation to when I come to a certain slide, if I understand what you're looking for out of this a little bit better? I'll pause on that slide and I'll try to address those questions when those come up. So I guess, is there anything that I can help clarify? Or do you have any questions that I can make sure to highlight?
Trustee Weigert.
I guess I don't know a lot about pest management. But I guess it would just be strategies, you know, handling what we've heard a little bit today, but also on, you know, toxic versus non-toxic and those kinds of things and the cost to the district for utilizing all or different, different, non-toxic and toxic.
Okay.
Is there some more, Trustee Barto? Do you have other items?
Mine's similar, but more related to how we stage that. So if elementary, for example, if we know that students are going to be present, is there some kind of requirement as to how far out we do that? Or, you know, what the rate of decay of those chemicals is before we get students back?
Great question. Okay.
Trustee Crane.
Well, my question is, I know parents, well, this may not be fitting in this one, but maybe if it is, please feel free to answer or get back to me. Parents were suggesting turf for the baseball field. Can varmints chew through the turf?
Yeah, that's my concern too.
Generally, not really, especially if it's an athletic turf. The system is built up from the ground up such that nothing's really... No. It'd be like trying to chew through concrete coming up for gophers or anything like that. And going down, it would be similar. Plus, they'd get a mouthful of stuff that they don't really enjoy eating. And so they would probably move away from that.
Right.
Okay.
My question, Trustee Murphy, we're giving him ideas of things we might have questions on if he wanted to have one. My question is on the change between what it sounded like was a change to a more organic approach to what we're doing now, which seems to be less in that lane. But our policy language uses things like the least harmful. So just kind of, most of us, I don't think any of us were on the board. I think in 2016, when some of that happened. So just maybe a little of the history would be helpful. Thank you.
And Trustee Barto, you asked like reentry. Would we want to, like specifically for weeds? Because that's usually what we look for is the reentry interval or when it's safe to come back into a treated area.
Yes, exactly. Yeah.
Perfect.
Trustee Murphy.
So sorry if I missed this before. But so I guess my question would be, I know Costa Mesa passed its own ordinance regarding pest management, organic pest management. Are we in compliance with that?
Okay. That's one that I didn't address specifically in the slides. So I'll answer that question now. We are under the purview, the California Department of Education actually oversees the Healthy Schools Act and the IPM programs for schools. In addition, we also have to follow the regulations of the Structural Pest Control Board, Consumer Product Safety Commission, and the Department of Pesticide Regulations, as well as the Orange County Department of Agriculture. One of the things that is not in our hierarchy of overview is the city. So oftentimes, schools are located directly adjacent to a pocket park. The city's pest management policies might be different from the school's requirements. For instance, we fall under the, in the year 2000, the state passed the Healthy Schools Act, which requires posting a notification prior to any treatments. The city is not required to follow those same guidelines. So imagine Mariners, for example. We have no fence between the city property and ours. So if the city goes to spray a pesticide or an herbicide in the field, as long as they're on their property, they don't have to follow the same rules that we do. So we don't fall under the city's policies or plans.
How does that work when we share fields, though?
We play nice together. So we do have good relationships with both cities' management. We do have partnerships there. The city of Costa Mesa, especially through the maintenance of Lincoln, we share responsibility for that field as well. We do have good relationships with the cities. So did that kind of answer your question? And maybe as we go through.
I think we'll have more, but that's a good start. I do have one more. It's a little off topic, but sort of on topic. So to address the Newport Harbor baseball field, would putting turf in address the vermin issue? I mean, sort of off topic, but kind of related?
Yes and no. So there might be other things that we could do for exclusion or keeping the pests off the field rather than changing the turf. Artificial turf on a ball field would be a tremendous amount of maintenance and a tremendous effort. If there are other ways that we can keep the vermin off, we might want to explore those before.
Is this anything we can involve ENC with?
Yes, yes, we can absolutely have the discussions with them. I'm not as intimately familiar with the arrangements with ENC. So I caution against, or I wouldn't want to speak out of turn on what those possibilities might be like. Okay, all right. With that, I'll pause on a couple of the slides and highlight some of these areas where you have questions. Please feel free to follow up with any of the, as you hear more about the program, if you have any further questions. We do utilize industry best practices. So our IPM plan and our board policy is inclusive, remember, of all pests. This is little things that crawl around or weeds that grow up through cracks and up through the soils and in our turf and our grasses. You heard a lot of comments from the baseball teams about invasive weeds in the ball field and hazardous conditions. These are part of the things that we want to try to address in the least toxic methods possible. Our best management practices suggest exhausting all non-toxic methods before we go into chemical treatments or the use of pesticides. This is not only for the safety of our staff and our students, but it's also for the long-term control of pests because we want to get to the underlying reason why the pest is coming into our campus before we just go out and start blasting everything, poison. All pesticide and herbicide applications are taken very seriously. They're only made when certain conditions are met for limiting potential exposure to staff and students. We look at the habitat, what conducive conditions are encouraging the pest to be there. If we are going to do a treatment that's not a non-toxic treatment, for example, what's the potential for exposure to staff and students? What is the potential for environmental hazards? So if it's near a body of water, for example. And then do we have other pest-sensitive areas? Kindergartens, for example, special ed classrooms, areas where we have a little bit more of a delicate student population. We want to take that into consideration as well before we select or recommend a pest treatment method. We have action level thresholds for, and it's individual per pest. And what this states would be, if we have a low threat or pressure from a pest, we're not going to jump and use the most toxic pest control method available. We're going to look at this on a case-by-case basis and elevate the treatment as necessary. If we have a heavy infestation of cockroaches, for example, we might go to a less toxic chemical to knock down the population before we move into more toxic methods that have a greater risk. Weeds, this is a good question. When do we determine that it's best practice to treat weeds with chemicals? And we are at the school sites on a weekly basis. We do manual mechanical methods while we're there. We're really trying to increase our efforts for weed prevention, preventing overwatering, placing mulch in planter beds. We have a day of service coming up. Ms. Terry Lee Stevens is working with us. Her group often brings mulch to our schools and helps us out. And I think it's a great partnership with our communities. But we really elevate the treatment methods to address the threat pressure that we get from the pest. And then what do we need to do to control that?
Ask a quick question?
Yep.
At the Newport Harbor baseball field, the bunnies have been a problem for a long time. What are we doing now to kind of mitigate that? I know that there's obviously a lot more we need to do, but what have we done so far?
So the biggest thing that we've done is trapping. And so we're trying to remove the population from the school site. We removed some of the storage containers where they're living under. We've done some fence modifications to keep them from climbing around the gates. Unfortunately, it's springtime. And so rabbits tend to increase in population as time comes around. So it's just going to be added pressure.
So it's going to be at its peak right now.
It's, we're coming up to that very quickly, yes. We have tried to do some exclusion and we have done some trapping. And then we've done some habitat modification by removing some of the structures that they were living under.
Thank you.
Selection of pesticides and herbicides. So when we opt to use a pesticide or to control a pest, we look at first, what is exempted? So there is something called FIFRA 25B exempt pesticides. And these are products that typically use botanical or natural-based products and extracts. These do not have an EPA number. They've been deemed by the EPA as safe to use. And they are exempt from all the posting and notification requirements of the Healthy Schools Act. They are often very selective in their applications and use. Weeds, for example, there are no FIFRA 25B exempt weed killers that I'm aware of approved for use in schools. So we would look for, after an exempt product, we'd look for reduced-risk applications. So we might apply a gel or some kind of a treatment in a crack or crevice where students can't get to it. Again, that's Healthy Schools Act exempt. They're typically very low on the toxicity level. And then we move up from there to low toxicity. And I want to spend a little bit more time here because there were a couple of questions on toxicity. There is a distinction between synthetic and organic and toxic and less toxic. Organic does not necessarily mean less toxic. And a lot of organic products that are available are actually more acutely toxic than the synthetic alternatives. So when we want to see or select a product that we want to use, we look at the overall toxicity. And that could include risk factors such as skin contact, skin burns causing blindness, inhalation injuries, environmental impacts, whether or not it has a potential for groundwater pollution or contamination or runoff. And then also the mix ratio and the effectiveness of the product. So to give an example, 40% of the school districts in the state of California still use Roundup or glyphosate product. Of the remaining, almost everyone uses another product called blue phosphonate, which is similar in the sense that it's another synthetic herbicide. The mix ratio for that is two ounces per gallon of water. The mix ratio for a lot of the organic products is one gallon to four gallons of water. So we would be applying tremendously larger amount of product with each application. The other problem, and this will kind of address the question with the organic program at other school districts or the city of Costa Mesa, we spoke with a number of grounds managers and grounds departments. And the frustration is most of these organic products do not work. They require frequent reapplications. So rather than spraying two to four times a year, they're spraying every other week or every three to four weeks to try to maintain control. So not only are you applying more chemical product to each application, you're also increasing the application frequency. And so both of those are considerations that we want to keep under control. Chemicals are chemicals. And when used according to the product label, we can mitigate some of the risks. So did that answer the question on toxicity? Or would you like a little bit more specificity? You mentioned costs.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think you kind of answered it with the amount that we would have to use of the organic or less toxic. But you would just have to buy even more of that and use it more often.
And it's not insignificantly increasing cost. When we talk about the safety of children, I would have a hard time arguing that the safety of our children is probably at our higher priority than cost. But it still is a prohibiting factor.
Right.
Lance?
Yep.
There was also a question about the rate of decay.
Yes. I'm trying to remember where I got to that point in the presentation. Let me check this next one. There we go. Reentry interval. So like I said, we determine the toxicity of the products and the potentials for exposure. The signal word, caution, warning, danger, in that order from least to most toxic. Acute toxicity is anything that is immediately hazardous, like skin burns or blindness. Chronic toxicity would be anything that's a mutagenic effect, birth defects, or potentially carcinogenic. Environmental, we want to make sure that anything we're applying isn't getting into the groundwater or protected environmental property. And then the next ratio, reentry interval and other factors. So reentry interval specifically for most of the products that we use in a non-agricultural setting is as soon as the product is dry, it's safe for reentry. The other thing that we do is we have administrative controls. And so we look at the overall toxicity. And the likelihood of exposure, as that goes up, the toxicity of the products that we would choose goes down to the point where we would elect not to apply certain products in areas like, for example, kindergarten grass area where students are going to be running around and playing. We are not going to treat that, certainly not while students are present or would be interacting with that anytime soon after the application. The three routes for entry for any pesticide or product, inhalation, absorption through the skin or the eyes, and ingestion. And so we want to take that into consideration and not apply any product where students are going to be playing or rolling around in it and could absorb it through their skin. For most of the products that we would apply, the reentry interval is when the product is dry in a non-agricultural setting. If we want to, if we have a special circumstance and we need to be careful about the selection of our products or we need to know what's available, we do reach out to registered and licensed pest control advisors. We do have licensed and qualified staff on hand. We reach out to experts to help us better understand as well. Also, the administrative controls, we elect to do applications when students and staff are not present. All of our employees are trained annually as required. We do get visits regularly from the Orange County Department of Agriculture. We have had no issues with the inspections, either how we store, dispose of, or apply products. We do follow all of the requirements of the Healthy Schools Act, including prior posting and notification and record-keeping for all. and notification and record keeping for all pesticide applications. President Anderson, your question about changes in practices. I think you have a little bit more tenure here than I do, but I wasn't here in 2016 either. I am not aware of, and I've asked our staff if they're aware of any organic policies or programs that we have ever done for weed control. We did purchase a weed steaming machine. The problem is we didn't dedicate staff to it. And so we've tried to do steaming of weeds. It's very labor intensive. Again, it requires frequent reapplications and without having the dedicated staff to operate it, it becomes really tedious. We have not enacted any kind of an organic pest management program. We did make the decision to remove synthetic products from our pesticide list. We also had transitioned to some of the organic problems, products. And all of the issues that I had mentioned before, generally the ineffectiveness of the products, the need for constant reapplications, and then also the, the potential exposure for our staff and our employees who are applying the products. We actually had a chemical burn and an injury. And these factors combined kind of led us to the decision that this is not a, a great practice for us at this time. Since Roundup specifically was in trial court from Monsanto, the company that makes Roundup, wasn't a good idea to add glyphosate or to our product list. So we looked at if, is there any similar product that would have similar effects with the low toxicity? And glyphosate is what most school districts and municipalities are using as an alternative. That's how we, we transitioned from our organics or botanical products to reintroducing synthetics.
Have a student board member question? And we have Lisa Buller, who actually may have been on the PTA when some of the discussions were happening, because it was before me as well. So maybe Lisa might know.
These efforts directed at certain schools or is this kind of just like a cautionary thing for all schools?
The Healthy Schools Act is all schools and daycare facilities in the state of California. So we're required to identify an IPM coordinator, develop an IPM plan. Our plan is available on our website, ipm.nmusd.us. You can get detailed information there, including which products that we may use throughout the school year for control of pests. But this is a state directive that all school districts must follow.
Thank you.
Trustee Murphy?
Pearson.
Oh, did I push the wrong one?
It's okay.
Have we had any students or teachers sick from these toxins or from, from our products besides the chemical burn?
I don't have any reports of any issues with exposure. One thing I, I kind of relate to is when I was going to school, these laws weren't in place. And school districts did probably horrible things that we were exposed to as well. And we probably never even knew it. And hence in 2000, the state passed the Healthy Schools Act to try to bring attention to pesticide applications.
Anecdotally, I used to break out rashes every time I was on grass, so.
Okay. Trustee Murphy?
Well, I, I guess my question would be, because it doesn't seem like there's a whole lot we can do differently. That's not what I'm hearing anyways. If you had a magic wand and could do something differently, you know, regardless of anything else, what would you want to do?
So I've talked with a lot of grounds managers in, in local schools and municipalities. And the ones that have tried to lean towards adopting an organic program typically rely on contractors because they don't have the staff to do it internally. So if we wanted to do something to reduce the amount of pesticides that we use even further, we would increase our reliance on manual labor to, to do the removal. To put it in context though, we, we manage about seven and a half million square feet of landscaped areas every week. And we apply a couple thousand ounces of chemical products each year over two to four applications. So when we look at how much product are we actually applying to the schools, over seven and a half million square feet, it's very minimal. But if we were to do more and to answer your question, if we wanted to decrease our reliance on chemicals, we would increase our labor efforts and then increase our efforts in prevention. And it would involve some work, re-landscaping some of the planners. Some of our local districts have actually gotten away from bare dirt and they've either placed concrete or, or artificial turf to cover those areas. And now they're starting to realize that the areas that they placed the artificial turf, they're having to replace it much sooner than they had anticipated at a pretty great cost. So I would concentrate more of our efforts on weed prevention, adding mulch to planter beds and then more, we would need more labor.
Any other questions? And trustee Ursula is not here. I know she had several questions as well, but she will email her questions in. Thank you. Yes, yes, we'll perhaps have trustee Ursula come in and have a meeting about that. Thank you so much. This is very informative and very timely.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have. Number twenty, informational items legislative and state budget update. Trustee Barto and trustee Murphy. Do you like to start, trustee Barto? Would you, would you like to go first?
No, I, I just have AB 370, but you have.
Okay, all right. All right, so a few things. The CSBA Legislative Committee has two bills that they took a position on. AB 247, which would place the kindergarten through community colleges, public education facilities, bond act of 2024 on the ballot to provide unspecified funding to construct and modernize education facilities. It's been about fifty years since we've had a, a similar budget bill appropriation, anything like that for our schools. So this one is awaiting consideration by the Assembly Education Committee. Additionally, there is Senate Bill 28, which would place a 15.5 billion bond for the construction and modernization of public preschool K through 12, community college, UC and CSU facilities on the March 2024 statewide ballot. It was passed by the Senate Education Committee and awaiting consideration by the Senate Governance Finance Committee. So what we've been saying for a long time is that our facilities statewide are in need of update has been at least heard by these legislators and we'll see where those, where those bills go. Let's see. Additionally, CSBA took a support position on SB 234, which would require schools to maintain unexpired doses of naloxone hydrochloride or another opioid antagonist on site. This was passed by the Senate Education Committee and is awaiting consideration by the Senate Health Committee. This is another one that they are hoping by putting this bill in place, that state funding will come to support this for every school statewide. Let's see. Additionally, CSBA voted to oppose AB 1699, which would apply a one size fits all approach to district administration and personnel decision making by requiring local educational agencies to offer open classified staff positions to existing staff first. It would include a requirement to provide on the job training if an interested existing classified staff person is unqualified for the position before making the position open to the general public. This is awaiting consideration by the Assembly Public Employment and Retirement Committee. Additionally, today, they, this is an additional opposed position of SB 433, which would delete a school district's authority to take disciplinary action against a classified staff person by placing it into the hands of an impartial third party, hearing officer, and require districts to fund the associated costs of obtaining that ruling. This is awaiting consideration by the Senate Labor, Public Employee and Retirement Committee. And then I have to look up the exact ACA, but there is a bill that I came recently, which would be an executive order or a, well, it's hard to explain. But long story short, it's, I want to take an opposed position because it would create the superintendent of public instruction statewide as a governor's appointed position instead of its currently elected statewide. I think it's in our interest to keep that bit of local control as we can. So CSBA asked for an opposed position and for lobbying on school board members' behalfs to, to make that known, that that's something that school board members oppose in the interest of protecting our, our local control and our voters' rights. And that's all I had for now.
Thank you. And I just have a little update on President Anderson's request that we follow AB 370, or 3720, the bilingual inclusion act passed out of the Assembly Education Committee on March 29th. The bill allows for more students to qual, and this is a timely discussion. The bill allows for more students to qualify for the state seal of biliteracy by expanding the options to demonstrate proficiency in English and another language. It's been unanimously passed out of the Assembly Education Committee. It's now been re-referred to the Committee on Appropriations. It's unclear whether there is a cost associated to it. So I think most of what I could tell, they're pretty hopeful that without a cost associated to it, it should be able to get out of appropriations. The author of the bill states that, that this is important because obtaining the state seal of biliteracy should be achievable for multilingual students from all primary language backgrounds. AB 370, oh, I can't read my handwriting. AB 370 addresses this equity issue by updating the criteria required to obtain the state seal while creating a clear path for all LEAs to implement. Balancing this benchmark is a step in the right direction where it comes to equitable education. And so we will continue to follow that, President Anderson, and hopefully it sails through.
And what, what, I looked it up. What would AB thirty?
370.
Thirty, what? Thirty seven twenty.
I, am I not, can I not read? I looked it up and wrote it down.
No, you said, you said thirty seven twenty, yeah.
Thirty seven twenty.
Yeah, but there's a, because there's a thirty seven, but that's an older one. So yeah, thank you.
Thirty seven twenty.
I want to make sure that I got back to the CSBA people with that one too.
Yeah. Sorry. I was writing fast.
Oh, yeah. I, I said that the ACA number was incorrectly. I mean, it's, it's getting kind of late for us.
It is getting a little late.
Yeah. Okay, we are now on item 21, the consent calendar. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to move.
You ready?
I'm so ready. I'd like to move to approve the consent calendar as stated.
I second.
Moved by trustee Crane, seconded by trustee Pearson. Were there any questions or discussion? Okay, I just had one note under A1 for the Astancia outdoor concept for the football weight room. There was just an item of clarification for those of us who attended Astancia. It mentions in the item, something about the Astancia black box theater. And we are not redoing or removing or touching that space specifically. It's where the old film and radio station was. So that is now going to be where the coaches are. So the drawings and everything that are attached are accurate, but just a point of clarification.
So that one that says proposed reuse of the old theater black box?
Yes.
Okay.
In case anyone had any questions, yes. All right, roll call vote.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Ursula? Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Okay, next, item 22, 22A, approve elementary history, social studies and instructional materials for adoption. Ms. Shields and Ms. Hernandez?
Yes, I want to thank Ms. Hernandez for the work, Dr. Hernandez, for the work she put into this presentation. I really want to give a shout out to the teachers who are here to support the process and speak about it. We will readjust the schedule next time. But thank you for everyone who participated and those who hung out tonight to make sure we understood the process. Thank you.
Is it up there? Okay. Hold on, sorry. It's getting late. All right. Good evening, President Anderson, board members, Dr. Smith, staff and community. Excited to be back tonight as a follow up to my presentation in March about our TK5 history, social science adoption. So as a reminder, our current adoption is consumable. It's a consumable product that's now out of print. And so tonight, we, we present our recommendation to replace our previous program with Studies Weekly for all classrooms TK5. Now, I would like to introduce one of our outstanding teachers, Ms. Campbell from East Bluff, who is still here hanging in there tonight. Yeah, please. In less than 12 hours, she'll be standing in front of five-year-olds with all her energy. So she's going to share some information. She was a member of our committee, so she's going to share some information.
Thank you so much for having me. I was lucky to be on the pilot committee led by the amazing Lori Hernandez. The committee began in February of 2022 and ended last month in March. All four adopted programs, Studies Weekly, Impact World, My World and TCI were included in the process. The committee decided then to pilot two programs, the first being Impact and the second being Studies Weekly. This included teaching each curriculum for six weeks and depending on your grade level, that meant either one or two units from each of the programs. Kindergarten, we had two. Typically, our attention span is a little quick, so we have more units. So we all gave a lot of input into the programs. And as you can imagine, we had very thoughtful and very passionate discussions around all the lessons, the positive and negative aspects of both of the programs. There were 38 classroom teachers and an additional eight staff members, including special education and TOSES. And they were all from all the zones and all the grade levels, all of which were extremely dedicated and determined to find the best curriculum for our students, for our teachers and for our families. We really feel like Studies Weekly was the very best out of those four programs.
So last month, you approved the community review of Studies Weekly, March 7th. And so the next day, the materials were available. We started taking appointments for community members who wanted to see the materials in person. But we also had online access for people who wanted to see the materials at home. And we have the materials in both English and Spanish. So on March 13th, we started publicizing. We sent an email to all of our elementary families with the directions in English and Spanish for how to access, also with our contact info if they wanted to come see the materials in person. And then we also put information on the district website and on every site website about how to access those materials. And so then we closed the review on April 7th so that we could take all of the input that was submitted and prepare it for you to review before tonight's meeting. And so we did have, or the over 20 community members leave comments. We had a forum where after they reviewed the materials, they could leave comments. And then we also included, we got, you know, a couple of emails here and there. So with that, tonight, we ask the board to approve the adoption of Studies Weekly. And then once approved, we're going to reconvene as a committee, get some input on teacher professional development and support that would be needed to roll this out to our teachers. So at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Trustee Barto? So overall, I look, I looked at a lot of the comments from parents and I really felt like it was a good pilot study because a lot of the comments reflected the diversity of cultures that were taught and a lot of really, a lot of really good things. I, I still have the concern with some of the, the errors that a lot of parents found in the texts and that we put that we would submit that back to the textbook manufacturer. And I think that that is great. I just, I'm concerned though about rolling out a program that has a lot of easily, even with teacher training, I, I just, that's a concern that I have is if there's, if there's a fair amount of errors. And I know it's a new curriculum and there's, it's probably the best of them. But, but my concern is when maps are inaccurate and things like that, I want to make sure that our students receive the correct instructions. So I think as time goes on, it will be addressed, but that is just my concern.
Yeah, I, the errors that we identified were actually in the online platform and we believe were a result of scanning and text and things. and we believe were a result of scanning in text and things to the online platform. And then some of the pieces that were added, they just rolled out a new online platform. So we did not find any of those errors in the actual print text that is going to be used by students. So we are, and anytime we get that input, we gave it right back to the company. And several of those things were already, you know, corrected as teachers use it. Anytime you launch a big online platform with that much content, there are things. So as we found them and as we've received them from parents, we look at what unit that is. We look at what it is, and they've been correcting them as we identify them.
That's great. I, I understand that because I have done massive website rollouts, and there's always errors, no matter how many times you look at it. So I'm glad that they addressed it quickly.
Yeah, and we didn't find any in the actual, the student text. And that's what we, we plan for teachers to actually use the, the hard copy student materials primarily, and the online is, you know, kind of a backup for students.
Wonderful, thank you.
Any questions? Trustee Pearson.
So I think I was on the online last night when I was looking at it, where it was just a short, short reading, short paragraph with about five questions. Is that the online part of the, what was I, what was I looking at?
You were probably looking at like an online quiz, or there's a bunch of different interactive things in there. But the actual student texts are based on the standards, and they have texts around the, the topics in history for that grade level.
Okay.
And then my question, I was, I was interested to see the comments. I'm glad that we had so, so many because I think sometimes we always wonder if we're going to get comments. And I was interested, too, that there wasn't a lot of focus on it being a hard book that people, I think in the past, and some of us have a, a deep history of loving history books. And so I'm, I'm appreciative of the fact that you're going to be using the, the printed version, I think, for the students. But then also, too, I loved what you shared the one time about, I think, when you were initially bringing it up, that this is something that, you know, we went a long time last time before updating our curriculum. And so, you know, if in four or five years, we decide we want to have a hard textbook, if there's one that is around that is approved by the state and all of that, that that's an option as well. So I am appreciative of that. Do you have a new question?
Yes, Trustee Barto.
My other question is, what kind of training goes along with this with teachers? What does that look like and things like that? Because I think that it'll be really engaging for students, but I'd love to hear how that's, how the teachers will be implementing that because it's not a textbook.
Sure, yeah, they're already used to the consumable format. And basically, they use it the same way they would use a textbook. It's just they can actually write on it, teach students how to underline key words. In the younger grades, they can cut things out and do different projects with it. And so it would be used really similarly to a text. It has a lesson plan that's similar. But we, we have a couple of different things we'll do with the training. One is training them on the program itself, like how are the units designed? Where do you find your resources? How is it, you know, organized? And then the second is actually teaching how to read, write, listen, and speak within the content area of history. So, you know, connecting it to those informational reading and writing skills. So our plan is to start with the initial training on the program components with the company and then connect it to other initiatives like Thinking Maps right from the beginning to our state standards for reading in the content areas.
Thank you.
That brings up another question for me. So then for, for Whittier, for instance, that is usually using history and social studies as one of their content areas for Spanish, is it available in English and Spanish? Or will they be doing a different content area?
So it is fully available in English and Spanish. We, they do already have an adoption for history, social science. They had to adopt, because our program was so old, it didn't have a Spanish version. So they adopted a program that they're using in some grade levels. But we are looking at that and, and working out how that's going to work in each grade level for the dual immersion classes.
Thank you.
All right, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Trustee Crane, seconded by Trustee Pearson.
Oh, sorry.
Wagen.
Student Board Member Kate Cherry.
She had, she left.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wagen?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Ursoilu? Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Our next item. Thank you very much, Dr. Hernandez, twenty four, informal, oh, I'm sorry, skipped ahead. Okay, twenty three, resolution, adoption calendar. A, adopt resolution twenty one four, zero four two three, Newport Mason Unified School District Authorization of Signatures for the Orange County Department of Ed. Got a question, Trustee.
Trustee Anderson, could we package all those together and just approve all of them at once?
I believe we need a roll call vote.
If it's.
Okay. All right, yes, we can do them all as one vote. So then we will also be approving B, adopt resolution twenty two zero four two three, recognizing May ten, twenty twenty three, as National School Nurse Day. And item C, adopt resolution twenty three zero four two three, recognizing California Day of the Teacher, May ten, twenty twenty three, and National Teacher Appreciation Week as May eight to twelve, twenty twenty three. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Trustee Wagen, seconded by Trustee Murphy, roll call vote.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wagen?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Ursoilu? Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Informal reports, Dr. Smith?
Reading the room, I'll be brief. We were asked to, to start providing childcare. And tonight was the first night we had childcare here for any parent or community members that want to participate in this public forum but don't have childcare. I think we only had one student, but, you know, it's there. And if people want to bring their, their children, we have some dedicated staff providing childcare support. I did want to say that the LMI that we had was great. I think it was also mentioned here at the dais, but one of the focuses coming out of it is improved communications in the district, communication circles from the employees all the way to the district and back at every level. And I'm so excited for us to start that work. I think it's really important. We're also finishing up our systems awareness work with MIT this week and really, really happy to continue that work. Had a chance to sit on AP Research presentations for the Academy of Global Studies. They talked about the memorization in classical music and the power of memorization. They talked about horror films and which are the scariest, and then the qualities of a billionaire, and I didn't check one box. So that's, that's how I felt that day. That concludes my remark.
Thank you. Board member reports or committee reports? We'll start at the end, Trustee Barto.
Thank you. Mine's quick. I attended the Araeus Dance Presentation. It's always amazing. I brought my Harbor student and my future Harbor student, and they were entertained the entire time, so that was great. It's a really wonderful performance that, with a lot of dance, different dance styles. And it's always fun to see how the dance team brings in a bunch of male students who have never danced before and teaches them in the course of a few weeks to do a dance in the Araeus show. It's always entertaining, but lots of, just so impressed by all the talent on that dance team and watching everyone from Dance One, who maybe had never danced before, getting an opportunity to perform and really go, go through that. It really speaks to me because I danced for a long time, and it was always something that I felt strongly about people who didn't have the opportunity to take a lot of expensive dance classes to have that opportunity. So it's near and dear to my heart, that, that show. Additionally, I just wanted to thank Superintendent Smith and Trustee Anderson for taking seriously some concerns I had, but especially the concerns that I heard from parents regarding those emails. I'm so glad that we have addressed them the way we have. And I also wanted to point out that when I went searching for our parental engagement kind of track record, we do have a parental engagement policy fifty twenty. It's last updated in two thousand nine. So I took a look at what other districts are doing, kind of thought of things, how they've changed, how we have brought parental engagement into our LCAP, how we have, we highlighted in our reports. And I think that it was a good start in two thousand nine, but we've done a lot of work since then. And highlighting that is something I think would be important for us to, to update. So I did some updates. I submitted it to the policy committee, and I leave it to the policy committee to, you know, take a look at it and see if, if what the suggestions that I made, based on feedback from parents and what other school districts have done. But more importantly, the work that we've done over the last several years can be included in that. So thank you.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes, thanks. I would just probably, I guess, remind everyone again that the LCAP survey is still available for parents to respond to. It's open until the twenty first. Everyone got an email. Please do respond and, and help us move the district forward with parent input. So that would be great. And I, it was, it was not a lot of time between our last meeting. So not a whole lot going on, except for I am going, I'm very excited to be attending the coast to coast Washington DC trip with my esteemed colleagues, Trustee Barto and President Anderson. So that should be great. We will be gone next week. Very much looking forward to that. And I think, I think that's it. Oh, it's the, it's the, almost, it's the, used to be called Pilot Cup, not Pilot Cup anymore. I know.
I know.
The pilot, pilot is not.
Because the daily, Newport, Newport Mesa Soccer Tournament?
Yes. Is open for registration, encouraging all families and students to participate who can. I think it's, it's third and fourth and fifth and sixth graders. Go Kaiser, they usually win. And that is coming up at the end of May. It's a really fun tournament, so I hope everyone participates.
I was able to visit Harbor View, and I got to sit in on the sixth grade Roman Showcase, which was at the end of their history unit. They had groups of kids, and every child did a video, presented a video. And so I got to watch all the sixth grade videos, and it was absolutely fantastic. And I got to enjoy some popcorn while we did it. I went to the PTA honorary award ceremony at CDM and got to see, got to help celebrate with the many parents who make CDM a better place for our students. And I also got to sit on, in on Ms. Mayberry's AGS class and was part of the panel to listen to her, to the kids' AP research projects, which were extremely impressive. Trust me, there are wonderful things going on in the classrooms, and these kids are getting into amazing, amazing colleges, and they're doing amazing work.
I attended the LMI training with President Anderson, and it was a great event to just see all of our partners come together and talk about where we, you know, we were, you know, do better and where we, where we strive to go in the future. So I thought that was a great first step. I think there's another one in May as well, which, I mean, it's just great. I wish that more organizations like this had a, a really good brainstorming and understanding of who everyone is and who, what every sort of, you know, person in the, in the, in the organization does and can come together for a common goal. Other things that happened are open houses. I've attended a couple, and those have been great to just to see that all the kids work out and, and on, and open, and open for prospective new families as well. There's been some kindergarten roundups. So we got, got to see a lot of, talk about our, what we, what they're going to learn in kindergarten, what they're going to learn in TK, and hopefully see that enrollment number come in. I also attended the Newport Harbor Araeus. It was amazing to watch. My daughter loved it. My son fell asleep, so I thought it was great. And then parent teacher conference. So, you know, at our district, we do take parental rights very seriously. And I want to thank all the teachers for the conference week that we recently had and for taking the time to put together such detailed information about each, each child so that you can really, you know, that as the parent, being the first educator of your child, really let that parent know what's going on in the classroom. So I really appreciate that partnership.
Well, it was open house season. I attended the East Bluff Elementary Open House and also their Screen Gala, same as Trustee Pearson. I attended the honorary service award at CDM. And our own Jake Haley was recognized and was a, was a honorary that day. So yay, go Principal Haley. Attended the AGS capstones, Ms. Mayberry's as a panelist. And of course, attended a bunch of athletic events such as volleyball, Val de Bay, track meet, which was great, and softball. And we played, actually, we played that day Huntington Beach, which actually won the whole league. So, but our, our girls, they hung in there. Went to T-Winkle for the Veterans Living History. That was wonderful, always amazing to, to watch and listen to our veterans who dedicate their lives for their country. Back Bay, Montevista, recognition award ceremony. Again, amazing to recognize these students that are, were struggling and now are moving in the right direction. Standing room only, once again, a lot of parents on hand. Also attended the Inclusion Council at Newport Harbor High School, which was very eye opening. There was about fifty, fifty attendees that spanned from students, faculty, counselors. Principal Bolton was there. And the topic was very interesting. It was a facilitated and it's an interactive session on conflict management. So it was really deep, and it was just wonderful. And just hearing the kids interact and voice their, their thoughts was just very impressive. Good luck to our students as they pretty much start launching their AP test season and state standardized testing, a lot of testing going on in, in April and May. So good luck to all those students. I wanted to thank Dr. Smith for your superintendent comments. I think it's really, really important to set the record straight and give the right information when we are not getting it necessarily in public comments. So thank you. And I also want to thank the hardworking assistant superintendents, all of them, and specifically today, tonight, Dr. Torres and Dr. Shields, because I admire all the work and the dedication you put forth, and you deserve to be recognized for that. Thank you.
I just wanted to follow up on the question that Fernando had, and I will also let him know. But at Astancia, the mockup and the drawings are coming very soon. So everyone will be able to see what the designs are if they haven't seen them online already. The parking lot is already fenced off, and I've gotten lots of calls and questions, when's the groundbreaking, and what the timeline is. So thank you, Mr. Trader, for taking care of that, making sure that everyone can see what will be coming. I also just wanted to thank one of our other assistant superintendents, Dr. Jockum, for spending several hours with me at the Orange County Board of Ed meeting on Wednesday, even though her two minutes were cut off in explaining what, which she had to share, which is a little disappointing because we try and make sure everyone has time to speak here. Thank you for being so clear and for being an advocate for our students and also a bringer of truth. And as, as I stated during that time, we, we have added this, several people on this board added an LCAP item around family engagement and community engagement. And so we highly prioritize parents and families and have a lot of board policies around parent notifications, parent rights, and involvement, shared decision making. So we will continue to look at those, but we already have several that are already in place and have been in existence for most of them over ten years. I'm also very thankful for our staff for listening for the expressed need for childcare. There were some that I shared that with, and they weren't able to make it today, but they're really excited to know that that is available. So I think that is a really big improvement, particularly for some of our D-LOC families that need that extra support. And I just wanted to say a big thank you to Sharon Wolf, Costa Mesa Athletics, who was at Astancia when I was there, and she looks the same. She never ages. And so just a congratulations on her retirement. And I believe that I brought up Sandy Gordon last time, who's also been a longtime Newport Mesa teacher. last time, who's also been a longtime Newport Mesa teacher. So it's just amazing to see some of our really dedicated staff and the incredible dedication they've shown to our students and our school campuses. That is all. It is nine-thirty on the dot. We are adjourned.